Good, okay. So we have PC in here, so PCTV. So I think I will do my intro and then we'll get started.
Thank you.
Mm hmm. Okay, well, good evening, this, a good evening and welcome to our regularly scheduled Tuesday, August 9th meeting of the Half May Planning Commission. We have a couple items to go over before we officially get started. This meeting is live on Comcast Local Channel 27 and on the Pacific Coast TV's website. The, we have many community members in attendance this evening and everyone in attendance does have the opportunity to speak. A review for the attendees, the Planning Commission Chair, Chair Goran, will open and allow a general public comment session prior to the specific item, public comment portion. At that time, he will open up that, them to, to you to speak. If you would like to speak during the general or the specific item time and you are on a telephone, please push star six to mute and unmute and star nine to raise and unraise your virtual hand. Otherwise, if you have a computer, tablet, iPhone, you should have icons or features that you can press to acknowledge your raise of a virtual hand. Be given three minutes to each of the commenters and a timer will show up on the screen. Public comment was submitted after the agenda packet was posted and prior to the start of this meeting. At 5:00 PM today, we gathered the comments and then emailed them to each of the commissioners, as well as posted it at the bottom of our agenda, so it is on, out there on the website agenda. If you, thank you for your continued patience during our remote meetings. And before I hand it over, I just wanted to say that we do have Spanish translation interpretation this evening. So I'm gonna go ahead and be working to turn that on as well. But we do have Victor in the background doing the interpretation. And I think you're gonna say something before I go ahead and switch, correct?
Thanks, Bridgette, to the chair. Muy buenas noches a todos ustedes. Les queremos dejar saber hoy que esta reunión será totalmente interpretada al español y para poder acceder el canal de audio, usted tendrá que hacer clic en un icono de un globo, es decir, un icono de un mundo que aparecerá al fondo de su pantalla en esta barra de tareas aquí en la plataforma de Zoom. Después de hacer eso, usted podrá seleccionar el idioma. Muchísimas gracias, thank you.
Okay, so I will go forward and get, Chair Goran can begin and I will turn the interpretation on.
Welcome, friends, to the show that never ends. I'm happy to open this August 9th meeting of the Happy with Planning Commission. And if you would all join me first in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you. Bridgette, we got a rule called commissioners.
Yes, Commissioner Riddick.
I'm here.
Commissioner Gossett.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Right here.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
I am present.
And Chair Goran.
I'm here.
All planning commissioners are present this evening.
So we want to start with the approval of minutes. Is there any, are there first, any commissioners that have any issues or questions with those minutes? I am not seeing anyone. We could have a motion to approve them. That would be Commissioner Riddick.
I move to approve those minutes.
I will second that.
It's Commissioner Gossett.
Okay, Commissioner Riddick.
Yes.
Commissioner Gossett.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Aye.
And Chair Goran.
I don't think I was at that meeting.
So abstain, okay. Motion approved for zero, come on.
So for tonight's agenda, we have a number of people who want to comment. We have a public comment period that is for items that are not on this agenda. So now is the time for anyone who has a comment that's not related to what's going on tonight to raise their hand to leverage it now so that we can get you included in this meeting. Bridgette, do you see anyone?
I don't see anyone. I'm just double checking phone. I'm not seeing anyone for general comments tonight.
Okay. So we'll, I guess I didn't officially open that, so we're not, we're not officially closing it. But we can move on. So the, so for anyone who's in the audience, how we're gonna do this is we're gonna have a presentation first about this agenda item. That could take a little while because there's quite a few things that we're gonna talk about. And then we will have public comment after that presentation is over, before the commission starts its deliberation and discussion. So Jill, I think we're starting with you, is that right?
That is correct. Give me just a moment to boot up our presentation. Bridgette, is that working? Great. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see so many folks in our audience today. It looks like about forty people so far. Welcome. And tonight, we have, before the Planning Commission, the Hyatt Hotel Proposal located at the south end of town. We are in the midst of a multi-year review process and this milestone is the draft environmental impact report, which has been prepared and is now circulating for everyone's review. The meeting overview, you, as, as the chair said, there will be a presentation. I'm starting it. I am going to provide some project background because this, this has had a bit of history and we, we hope that will catch everyone up. Our CQ consultants with Circle Point are here and they will present some general information about how environmental impact reviews work and some specific items regarding this project's review and how this process works. And then I will wrap up with next steps. The applicant is also here tonight and has a, my understanding is a brief presentation for you. He will introduce his team. There will then be the public hearing period where Chair Goran will lead that, that part of this, making sure everyone gets a chance to speak. And then time for Planning Commission discussion. This is not a decision-making meeting. This is time for us to take input on the environmental impact report. And your consultants and staff are taking a lot of notes and we're going to very carefully record this meeting because input relevant to the EIR will be moving forward and the consultant will talk to you about how that works. To launch into our presentation, just acknowledge that the project site is at the south end of Main Street. It's within the city's designated town center according to our local coastal land use plan. The site's about five acres and it includes some, some wetlands on the west side of the site that were created really from drainage off of the highway. And so that, that comes into play in site development potential because of our wetland buffer requirements. Adjacent to the site is the James Ford Auto Dealership and across the street is Main Street Park. It's an affordable housing development. We have the fire station and the theater over here. And of course, it's across the way from, this is a post-owned property. It is in agricultural use. And farther to the north is the Arlita Park neighborhood and as well as across the highway. So I'm gonna try to weave two things together here. Sharing the public meetings that have been held for this project review that kicked off way back in October 2016 and also showing the evolution of the project plans, which have changed a bit over time and how they landed where they are in the environmental impact report that you have before you at this time. Initially, the project included a hundred and forty-eight room hotel. It was in one building. And this is the site plan that was presented back in 2016. You can see that this is the building footprint, the parking lot. It surrounds the hotel structure. It was three stories with the exception of that one-story conference center at the front and had an ancillary building towards the, the south end of the project site. The layout of the building from the west and east elevations showing really the longest kind of statement that this structure could make were presented to the commission in these slides. A lot of feedback was given. There was concern about the location of the building. It was within the hundred-foot wetland buffer. It was a very, very long elevation. And there was also concern about its relationship to the gateway with structures so close to the corner. Following that, the applicant started working on some different versions of the project and we came back to the Planning Commission to launch the CQ process with the notice of preparation. That is where the commission and members of the public provided input on what to include in the scope for the environmental impact report. This is discussed in the EIR that you have before you. The applicant also showed two design concepts, one for a, one building project and another for a two-building project. It was an intent to respond to some of the Planning Commission input about trying to break up the structure. And you've seen that. General direction over time, and I'll, I'll highlight a few more meetings in a minute here. But just to highlight that the commission's direction, as well as along with the Architectural Advisory Committee, has really been consistent throughout the project review. These are a few of the highlights. We understand that you made a lot of other comments and these are captured in staff reports and meeting minutes that are all accessible through your, your staff report for this item. A lot of interest in protecting the ridge line views. It is a protected coastal visual resource from Highway One. We'll talk about that later tonight. Maintain the wetland buffer. Have a site plan and building form that's appropriate for this really highly visible and sensitive gateway location which is really bringing folks into the south end of downtown. Break the project up into smaller structures, more, to be more consistent with the built environment of Half Main Bay. Be careful about stormwater management and don't overpark the project. There was really a lot of parking and it looked like more parking than needed. It was more frankly than was really required by our code and it creates a lot of impervious surfaces. So these were just a few of the, the high points and I'm sure commissioners can remember some of the others. So after that 2018 notice of preparation, quite a bit of change started to come forward in project revisions. In October 2018, the applicant brought on board a new architect and they presented a completely new design and it was in a multi-building format. That was further refined and in July 2020, the Architectural Advisory Committee had their first chance to look at this project. This committee was seated in 2019, so they had not been involved until this point. And the refined design is the project as presented in the environmental impact report for a 129-room hotel and it is presented in multiple buildings. And I will show that in just a moment. About a year later, the applicant brought, had, during that time, did some more design development and based on feedback and some concern about the intensity of the development, how visual resources might be affected by the July 2020 reviewed design, the applicant came in with a reduced-sized hotel. It's a hundred-and-two-room hotel. And this is alternative two in the environmental impact report. It is the applicant's preferred project at this point and it is also the project that is represented in story polls on the project site right now. And that is what has been put forth. It was, it was assembled back in, for that June 2021 meeting. And then the applicant revised the story polls and improved them because they had taken a little bit of a beating from the weather. And now here we are with the draft environmental impact report. So just looking at a few slides about the project layout first. This is the multi-building format. The building towards the south end of the project, which is here on the left side of this graphic, was for conference space and some common kind of amenities for the hotel. The red dot here is showing the lobby area. This purple dot is indicating one of the buildings with guest rooms, as well as the blue dotted building over here. And then this little green one is a, that was a separate structure for an indoor swimming pool. The elevations, looking at the, the long elevation views from both the east and the west side, show the variety in the structures and heights and how they are essentially connected together with little, with breezeways. And these are the south and north elevations as well. Now for the alternative two. This is the, again, the applicant's proposal at this point. As you can see, the south end of the site is to the left and this proposal includes two buildings. They're both would include guest rooms. All those common spaces are now, such as a small conference area and a kitchen and the lobby are included in this south building. And the northern building is a three-story structure. The southern building is two stories. What's, in addition to the revision in the actual hotel, the site area was modified. And what you'll see here is the existing auto dealership where this black line is located. The proposal is to adjust the site area, increase it by, through a lotline adjustment, to open up space for the dealership, which over time would become parking area for the dealership. Currently, the dealership is using this site on the north side of Seymour Street for parking. And this site is in the residential duplex zoning district. So the idea would be to relocate the auto dealership use over to the south side of Seymour and then open up this site to the north for residential development. And in this version, it's shown as a duplex subdivision. There were some things that came up in the environmental review about the layout for this and I, we will be able to field questions about that, should the commission or public have any, but there's, there's some development going on with, with how to modify that right now. So the elevations on alternative two. This is the south building. I don't, I'm not showing the whole, the whole thing. We understand that this is a much, much longer elevation if you connect the two buildings together. The applicant has included that in their presentation and we'll show that to you. And then, so you see the two-story structure as well as how it would present itself to the gateway corner, which is this south elevation here. And the three-story building or the north building is presented in this elevation view. You can see the third floor is accommodated in the roof form. And that was something that the commission and the Architectural Advisory Committee saw about a year ago. So hopefully that orients you a little bit now to the project. The 129-room hotel that is limited to the project site takes up approximately three acres of that site. Two acres of it would be needed to be maintained in wetlands or wetland buffers. And it had 148 parking spaces. And then this, the alternative two, which would take up a smaller portion of that existing five-acre property where the auto dealership is extended to the south and a housing site is opened up. And this development proposal with 102 hotel rooms includes 108 parking spaces. And with that, I really want to get this over to our EIR consultants who are going to give you a lot more detail on how, how the EIR how, how the EIR has come, come to be and how to participate in it. Audrey Zagazida is here. She is the CEO and President of Circle Point, serving as principal in charge of this environmental review. And Juliet Martin is also here and she is serving as the project manager. Juliet is going to take over the presentation at this point in time and I want to welcome you Juliet. I think I saw you in the panelist room and I will click for you when you're ready to move on through the slides.
Great. Thank you, Jill. Can you hear me all right? Great. Thank you. To start off, I'd like to explain exactly what an EIR is for those who might not be as familiar. An environmental impact report or an EIR is a document that's used to disclose a project's impact on the environment. An EIR, it's one of the documents used in CEQA compliance. If you're also unfamiliar with CEQA, it's California's Environmental Quality Act that outlines protocols for statewide environmental protection. So part of the EIR process is public engagement. The EIR creates a public platform for the community agencies and stakeholders to participate and engage in the environmental process. Holding this meeting, it's a valuable opportunity for the public to provide their feedback on the adequacy of the environmental analysis. In the next slide, I'll talk a little bit more about why we chose an EIR as a route for environmental compliance. And so why an EIR for this project? Early in project review, city staff identified multiple potential environmental impacts that may arise from the project, particularly in the realms of aesthetics, transportation and biological resources. It was understood that the rigorous review provided through the preparation of the EIR would be most appropriate for this project, given the potential significant environmental impacts. As I mentioned previously, another important reason is that the EIR provides a great outlet to foster meaningful public participation to the public as well as decision makers. Once impacts are identified, the EIR is able to identify measures to avoid and minimize or reduce impacts. Another thing that EIR does is identify potential project alternatives, which might better suit project objectives and reduce environmental impacts. Next slide, please. Review period. So the typical review period for an EIR lasts 45 days. For this particular project, a maximum of 60 days was chosen in order to give an opportunity for the public to provide feedback and comments on the project and the adequacy of the EIR. As I mentioned, this hearing provides a platform for public comments and feedback and it will help us prepare the final EIR. I'll talk a little bit more about public comments in the next slide. So when I say adequacy of the environmental analysis, these are the types of comments that are most helpful. The EIR adequacy of the environmental analysis is basically, does the EIR effectively identify, analyze and disclose the impacts of the projects? And also are there measures or alternatives that should be considered that would substantially reduce impacts? So the types of comments that are most helpful are those that pertain to adequacy. And identify whether the EIR is effectively identifying impacts. So why is this important? While all comments will be part of the administrative record, the final EIR will focus mainly on those pertaining to adequacy of the analysis that was conducted. So here we're providing a couple of examples, so that, that disclose what comments pertain to adequacy. So the first is an example of a comment that does pertain to whether the EIR presented an adequate environmental analysis. So the example is the EIR does not adequately address the project's inconsistency with local regulations and it might even cite the general plan policy or whatever regulation document that the project is inconsistent with or that the EIR did not disclose. This comment is helpful because it pertains to a threshold that was used to analyze the environmental impacts per CEQA. And it also cites the local or regional plan or policy that the environmental analysis failed to address. The second one is a comment that it's still part of the administrative record and the city takes into account, but it doesn't pertain to EIR adequacy. And the example is the project would introduce a commercial aspect to the city that is harmful to the community. This isn't a threshold that's analyzed in the EIR under CEQA. So it doesn't particularly pertain to adequacy. So hopefully this is helpful in making comments. And next up, we have technical studies. So the EIR is prepared based on technical studies that have been conducted by experts. These studies are included in the EIR as appendices and the EIR draws upon these technical studies and provides an analysis in the body of the EIR itself. Since the EIR is a pretty big document, you might want to use the T O C to find topics that you have an interest in or a concern with. So for example, if you're interested in effects to protected biological resources, you would go to section 4.4 Biological Resources or straight to appendix D for the granular data. Or for example, if you're concerned with noise generated as part of the project, you could go to section 4.12 Noise and Vibration or appendix G for the detailed quantifications. Alright, project alternatives. So as Jill mentioned earlier, several alternatives were considered for this project. Alternatives are assessed based on ones that were considered but were rejected for further analysis and those were that were carried on for more detailed analysis. So for the first category of alternatives, there are several reasons why a project alternative might be eliminated from further consideration. And this includes failure to meet most of the basic project objectives, in feasibility, inability to avoid significant environmental impacts. So for the first bullet here, we have alternative site locations. Several alternative site locations were considered. But they were not carried forward due to reasons such as incompatible zoning, insufficient access, significant environmental effects. There were also several other development scenarios that were considered. And these weren't carried forward due to inconsistency with basic project objectives. For those that were analyzed, we have three alternatives. The first is a no project alternative. Under this alternative, the project site would remain in its undeveloped state and there would be no development of structures or use of the site. Alternative two, as Jill mentioned earlier, would include construction of a 102-room hotel along with a subdivision on Seymour Street. Alternative three is a multifamily residential alternative, which consists of two main buildings with 58 multifamily units as well as the same subdivision along Seymour Street. And if you would like to read more on these alternatives and more detailed analysis is available in the alternatives chapter of the EIR. So the EIR should draw conclusions on how a project would change existing conditions at the site. And it should identify measures that are going to minimize and reduce the impact. Based on the analysis that was conducted in the EIR, the majority of the environmental topics were found to not have an impact as long as with the consideration of the, not consideration, with the commitment of mitigation measures. So these listed in the first row with commitment of mitigation measures were found to be less than significant. However, the EIR does disclose that there would be a significant and unavoidable impacts associated with aesthetics. This is due to the type of development proposed at the site and is discussed in further detail on the subsequent slides. Given the significant and unavoidable impacts identified for aesthetics, we're going to delve a little deeper into the methodology used for identifying those impacts. So the first bullet, in coordination with the city, four key viewpoints were selected that were representative of the most critical locations from which the project would be seen. These viewpoints were selected based on usefulness and evaluating existing landscapes and potential impacts on protected visual resources pursuant to the local coastal program. Visual simulations were prepared at each of these four viewpoints and story polls were placed at the site. In the next slide, we will talk a little bit more about the viewpoints and the simulations. And I will turn the slide over to Jill.
Thanks Juliet. I'm just going to spend a moment explaining a little bit about why viewpoints one through four were selected in these locations. Viewpoints one and four are both reflective of community values with regards to aesthetics. They aren't specifically protected views from the perspective of the local coastal land use plan. Viewpoint one is looking at the project site from the Main Street Park Apartments. We chose the center of that development where there's open space to try to indicate where most folks might be outside or walking down the sidewalk and experiencing what would be a change in the environment on, on this stretch of Main Street. And so viewpoint one is a very important community viewpoint. Viewpoint four is also in that category as this is the Naomi Patrick Trail. It's a public space. Views from Naomi Patrick Trail aren't specifically protected in the land use plan, but we did include it because we heard, heard some interest in this as well as to be real frank, I, I selected this because I knew it would be, show the bulk of the project in one, in one visual shot because of the span, the length of this project site can be seen from this viewpoint, which is hard to do from, from most other parts of the project. You can't get far enough away from it, for example, on, on Main Street. Moving over to viewpoints two and three, these are both absolutely relevant and policy related to the local coastal land use plan with regards to the protection of views from Highway One or SR1 as our consultants will refer to it. And views to the ridgeline to the, to the east. You have upland slope and ridgeline policy protections in the local coastal land use plan. And so viewpoint two, from fieldwork, we, we really walked around to try to find we're, we're looking for where, where it's going to have the biggest impact. And so that was our intent. And two is really where you're coming upon the project. And three, you're, you're already at the site and so you're quite close to the buildings and we would expect it to be really the, the most significant amount of blockage from the perspective of driving down the road. We were not thinking about this particular criteria as driving down the road and as a passenger or driver turn your head 90 degrees to see the project. We're, we're, we're looking, we chose these viewpoints for the experience of moving forward on Highway One and what you can see with regards to the ridgeline and how much of the hillsides are available to, to the viewer. And so that is, that is why these were selected and to back it all up, of course, the story polls let everyone have whatever viewpoint they want for evaluating the project. So that is the benefit of that. We can only study so many in the EIR and we did our best to present those that are both protected as well as community oriented. And with that, I'm going to move on and then bring it back to our CEQA consultant.
For this slide, I'd like to request that our, our aesthetics specialists who created the visual simulations be added to the panelists.
Can you just refresh me of his name, please?
Yes, it's Adam Noble. So Adam, once you join, if you could explain a little bit about the methodology in creating the visual simulations.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, commissioners. I was asked to, to describe how we, how we developed the visual simulations. This is a pretty daunting slide here, but it is, it can be fairly complex in activity, but in general, it's fairly straightforward. But I'll, I'll just walk through it in a, in a linear fashion. That's how we would produce something in us. So the, the goal is to really develop the site as it stands today in a 3D virtual environment with available data, including site survey data and, and photogrammetry, GIS coordinate space, all relative. So, so what we do is we develop an existing condition model with the ground planes and a lot of the elements that are currently there to be used later, such as poles, trees, road edges, existing buildings, whatever is fixed that has a dimension that we can rely upon later when we match the photography. We do that in parallel with developing the model for the particular proposed project in the same space. Sometimes we get that from the architect and position it or we coordinate with them prior so they're working in the same relative space and scale that we work in. We really need to get the high resolution photography taken, digital photogrammetry. We take the, the locations as defined as Jill identified. We shoot those, we shoot a variety of, of shots and angles, but from those relative positions. Those are reviewed. Those are selected. And we're embedded in that photo, photography, the GIS position, location and height relative to our space and the focal length. So the camera lens length is, is known so we can match it in the virtual world. Then all of that is brought in to our, our 3DS Max or AutoCAD software tool. We use 3DS Max. Some of the stuff does go through AutoCAD for translation. But we use 3DS Max from Autodesk. And we use that model in those camera locations, which 3DS Max can match and, and align fixed conditions to the photogrammetry. So we, we basically can look at a viewport and see the photo and then see all those elements line up. Let's say it's a roadside, a various number of trees, existing buildings, et cetera, until we are fairly until we are fairly confident or very confident that that is a lock. Um, that's called photo alignment. That's been uh, done for, for years, but it's a critical component to, to uh, the accuracy of, of, of these things. Once you have that lock, then you can swap out the existing condition model with the proposed building elements um, that, that you modeled in the same space to see where they, where they would land uh, relative to the photograph. The last kind of thing to do there would be to render what the, those proposed elements are of the building. This can be in varying levels of, of detail. Um, in this case, we just did general massing to show the height and bulk of the proposed project and not articulate uh, windows, the in and outs of the dormers and such. So it's, it's very uh, specific to just kind of general massing. Um, and it, that typically is done for kind of a worst case. This is as bad as it's gonna look in terms of, of, of volume. Uh, those are, those are rendered out using render engines uh, that are plugged into 3D S Max. We try to match uh, the, those, those renderings to the, the photography in terms of noise. Uh, we get direction on what kind of color should be used, et cetera. And then finally, in post, which would be Photoshop, uh, one of the techs will blend and bring forth uh, the foreground elements that are to main um, and, and just blend edges and, and make sure that everything looks uh, as clean as, 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 as possible. Um, and that is generally how, how one of these is produced. In, in this case, I will bring up the, the photos, the base photos had the story polls in it. So we had one additional element um, that we typically don't have. And that was the, the massing, those massings also line to these story polls that were out there already. So the consistency, that's just another, another level of, of consistency that we can rely upon. It is very rare, but, but very effective. So hopefully that's not too complicated, but, but that, that's the process for, and the science behind how these things are done. Thank you.
And um, excuse me, but did you want to include a slide of, of the simulation so people can see?
Yeah, um, through the chair. I think what we need to do is um, I'm gonna wrap up and then we're gonna flip back into the um, we can, we can take a look at those. I don't have them all loaded um, into this presentation, but we were going to show folks where they can find them. Uh, just on that note, um, there's two places in the environmental impact report where the simulations are located. And maybe Juliette, in your, you can be working on getting those um, available to show. Uh, in the project review, um, under the aesthetics section is a series of simulations that were done through that hundred twenty-nine room version of the project. And then in uh, I think it's section five of the environmental impact report, which is where alternatives are considered. Uh, there's a whole additional series of um, these photo simulations uh, for the alternative two, the hundred-two room hotel, which is the one that is um, put out there in story polls. Juliette, do you have those available? Or should I finish our slides and then we can go over to those?
I do. I have the uh, particular chapters of the E I R up here. So I can share those and flip to
Right. I will stop sharing. You can take it over for a little bit.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Uh, so this is the aesthetics chapter. And I will scroll down to um, this is the same key viewpoint map that Jill shared in her slide. These are the existing conditions, so photos that were used in creation of the simulations. Um, so the, those were viewpoints one and two. And then we move into viewpoints three and four. Um, and this is an existing nighttime view of the project site. Moving on to where the simulations are. Um, here we have a comparison of the existing view and the simulation at viewpoint one. Um, Jill, would you like to mention anything as I go through these, or should I just?
Go, go ahead. Just, just keep going. I think we have so much more to do, so keep going.
Okay, sounds good.
Just to give an idea.
Mm-hmm. All right, that is viewpoint one. Moving on to uh, viewpoint two. This first image is the existing view. This one is the existing view with the project. And this one is the view with the project as well as the southern gateway, a rendering of the southern gateway. This is viewpoint three, again, existing and view with project. And this is viewpoint four, existing and general massing simulation of the project. Moving on to the other location where the visual simulations are available. This is chapter five, alternatives. Use the scrolling. Um, so again, we have viewpoint one. This is for the reduced intensity alternative or alternative two. Um, you can see the massing there. This is viewpoint two, reduced intensity alternative two. Oops, sorry about that. And this is viewpoint three, again, alternative two. And viewpoint four, this is just general massing for alternative two. Um, this is, visual simulations were only prepared for alternative two. So we don't have, um, they were not prepared for the multifamily residential alternative.
Thank you for doing that.
Of course.
So I think at this point, Juliette, I'm gonna um, move back into um, our presentation. And if we need to click into these later um, during planning commission discussion, um, you'll have those available. Um, but I, I'm, oops, I'm gonna ask you to stop sharing. There you go. And there, good, thanks. Um, so this, the relationship of what uh, Juliette just presented and our, our uh, consultant who did that technical work in, on creating these uh, simulations to your environmental impact report and the analysis of impacts um, relative to the project and relative to the alternatives is um, sort of summarized in, in this chart. I'm, I'm trying to um, simplify a little bit of how to think about this. In the uh, top column, or excuse me, this, this top row here, we're thinking about viewpoints one and four, those um, that are really important from our community's perspective of the aesthetic and community character of um, this part of Half Moon Bay. And the specific policies that we looked at for uh, relative to these two viewpoints. And then there's yet another um, factor in here, which is that there are four, four questions that are um, asked in the SEQUA checklist. The California Environmental Quality Act has us looking at specific um, criteria for the evaluation of an impact. And um, in this case, we believe that third um, question is really the one that applies to these community interest views. And the question is um, in non-urbanized areas, it substantially degrade the existing visual character or quality of public views of the site and its surroundings. Um, if the project is in an urbanized area with the project conflict with applicable zoning and other regulations governing um, scenic quality. And we, we consider based on all the public input that we've heard to date as well as the um, planning commission and architectural advisory committees' direction that this is a big, this is a really significant change. And we encourage you all to read uh, this, this write-up for um, this, this criteria. It's A E S C and it um, comes into a um, discussion of of how we come to a conclusion about the impact because of the uniqueness of this site. It is significantly visible um, with its long frontages and its uh, gateway orientation. And uh, we found there to be an impact uh, relative to both the project as well as alternative two in this particular case. Um, this doesn't mean that any pro, project, just because it's getting, uh, a site getting developed would have such an impact. This is uh, really was um, the intent in, in this write-up was to uh, identify what is really pretty extraordinary about this property. We did not find a policy conflict on for um, viewpoint one or viewpoint four with regards to the land use plan. Um, resource protection, nine-two, and uh, site planning and design for new development, nine-six. Uh, there are a number of things that are supposed to be um, completed in design review to improve aesthetics. And we noted over the course of this design development that many, many of these things, if not all of them, were accomplished or, or at least um, were really, really tried to be done here. So uh, this was more about community character and um, and impact that is important to, to your community members who um, we, we know you've been receiving uh, written communication. And we'll probably hear some, some uh, speakers tonight on this. Now, moving to the other set, uh, viewpoints two and three are those uh, two that are showing us uh, protected views. Um, so Highway one is um, very special. It's a visual resource corridor. We treat it like a scenic highway in Half Moon Bay, even though it's not a state designated scenic highway. We, we acknowledge it as, as such um, due to your land use plan policy. Uh, this most uh, relevant policy um, related to both viewpoints two and three is the upland slope and ridge line policy. And then the SEQUA criteria that um, the questions that are in the checklist that we are um, addressing, and I'll, I'll read them both. Um, the, the first one, aesthetics, um, the, it's listed as A or, or number one in the write-up, have a substantial adverse effect on a scenic vista. And then the second one is substantially damage scenic resources, including but not limited to trees, rock out croppings and historic buildings within a state scenic highway. Because of the um, ridge line blockage that you saw in the simulation for the project um, from viewpoint three, where really viewpoint three is where, where the impacts really kicked in. Um, the project blocks um, views of um, a really wide span of, of the hills and the ridge line um, that we, we were able to demonstrate through these photo simulations. Um, we did, we concluded that this was a significant and unavoidable impact for the project. For alternative two, and as you saw in the visual simulation with viewpoint three, the, the building um, profile uh, just, just skirts along the ridge line. And so it's very, very close and it is within um, a, a realm of what we believe would be um, still experienced as a ridge line view for a driver. Um, and we did not find this to be a significant impact for the alternative two. Um, this is what the draft E I R is all about, however. Um, we're, we were happy to explain our logic about this because we know there are a lot of questions. And we'll um, expect to receive comments and um, we're looking forward to reviewing those. Moving on from that, we're, we're not going to present um, about any of the other um, impact areas tonight. Um, because we want to get to the public forum. Uh, we just focused on this one because there were significant unavoidable impacts and because most of the input that we're seeing from the community is on the topic of aesthetics. With regards to next steps, um, this is uh, the first half of the sixty-day circulation period for the document. Uh, this gives folks who, who, we, we would expect a lot of people have not um, been able to get through the whole thing yet. And you have, you still have plenty of time. Um, the comments are uh, due at five P M, September thirteenth. You can uh, drop them off at City Hall in person. You can mail them to City Hall or you can send them to the project email. And I'll, I'll get to that email address. Um, once we have all of those, the consultants uh, will be working on compiling them. And we will review and prepare responses to the comments. Uh, this is the, the most uh, critical part of preparing what's called the final environmental impact report. Uh, the final E I R will also include any corrections or clarifications that come, come about. If, if someone notices something where we, we made a mistake or we didn't state something clearly enough. We, we absolutely want to uh, go back and address that to make sure everybody has the best information they can. Um, the applicant tonight is um, also going to present um, a project modification to alternative two as an option for the planning commission's consideration. If that were to go um, in, forward, we would um, include that in the final environmental impact report or other modifications, um, depending on what comes to be from this public input process. It's hard to do fully determine next steps at this point because uh, we don't, we don't know what the body of the work is going to include in terms of the public comment. The project, however, will come back to the planning commission with a final environmental impact report and a project um, consideration. The project cannot be um, considered for approval, approval with modifications or, or denial until the E I R is complete and certified by the planning commission. Certification of an E I R is not project approval. It is your statement that the E I R is adequate. It, it covered the impacts uh, associated with the project. In the event that there are significant unavoidable impacts um, remaining um, for a project or an alternative, uh, the commission will also be um, needing to consider a statement of overriding considerations in the event that you wish to proceed with um, action on a project. We can talk to you a whole lot more about that when we're um, getting, getting uh, towards the hearing. Your staff report will be very, very clear at that point in time. Um, and we'll, we'll make sure that any member of the public who's interested, we can review that with you. All of that can be done in one hearing. It, it might also take more than one. And we just uh, we need to see how, how things go and, and how things work for the planning commission at that point. Um, we really have tried and encourage, continue to encourage everyone to remain connected to this process. Um, the city um, email address, our webpage, excuse me, our web, our homepage includes a notify me um, little icon. And if you click on that, uh, the city clerk offers ways to sign up to receive um, updates on different topics, such as planning commission agendas, for which we have, I think, over it's like seven hundred and fifty people have signed up for your agendas. We have um, I, on the order of four hundred folks who have signed up to receive updates on this Hyatt project. So um, if you would like to get email notifications, please, please sign up through the city clerk's link, which is available through the project homepage. The city is also hosting a webpage for this project and we're posting um, all of the The city is also hosting a webpage for this project and we're posting, um, all of the updates that we have there. For example, when we get new versions of the plan, um, the, the E I R is posted there right now and it will stay there. And we also have a project email address, hyatthotel@hmbcity.com. Uh, staff kindly request that you use this address. Um, I, I get so many emails a day that I'm, I don't want to miss a single one. And so please, uh, send them to this project address. And, um, it's being monitored, um, several times a day by both Bridget and me, and we really appreciate that. Um, so, uh, returning us back to the chair and, um, the order moving forward for this, this meeting. Um, we would request that the applicant have an opportunity to make their brief presentation. And then, um, moving into the public hearing and holding your planning commission discussion. Um, this is a meeting where we're not going to, um, we, we can answer questions if they're really, um, specific to clarifying matters and they're very straightforward. But big comments and questions pertaining to the sequo document, we are, we are recording them. And, um, uh, we won't be addressing them tonight. We don't want anyone to feel dismissed. Um, it's, it's going to be all part of, uh, a written response that everyone will see. Also want to note, our consultants are very focused on sequo oriented questions, which is why, uh, Juliette presented that, um, to you. So anyone who really wants to brood, um, comment on the sequo document on the draft D I R, that is our advice. That said, no one should feel, um, held back from commenting on the project in any way whatsoever. Um, we know that the planning commission wants to hear from you. And we want you to know that staff wants to hear all these comments too. It's just that not all of them will be addressed in the E I R. They all matter. And we're looking forward to, um, hearing from you tonight. And that's, that's our presentation. Thank you.
So you still want to have the applicant make their presentation before public comment?
I think it's to the benefit of the public in this case, and it's not as long as ours was.
Just to kind of alert people, we're going to try to keep this to about five minutes. Um, if the applicant could keep it to about five minutes, that would be very helpful because we want to, people have waited patiently, so. But, um, if we can get the applicant in here, there we go.
Can you hear me?
Uh, there you are.
Okay. I don't know why the picture's not showing up. I'm signed in and my camera's on, so.
Um.
Sorry about that.
We've got project team up on the, up on the site.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me see if I, if I go to share it on my screen, it's having trouble staying on the screen, I think. Can you see it?
Click on, please click, click on.
Or no, can you see it?
We can see your, I can see, I can see your stuff, yes.
Bridget, you need to move over to, um, the slideshow version. You're showing the, um, edit version of the PowerPoint, um, to the left. From beginning, left, there.
Yeah, I was, but can you see it? It's not.
It's not the right one. You need to, you need to select the other screen when you go into share. We can work with this. There you go.
There we go.
He's got it. All right.
Tiny setting, um, disruption. So, okay, go ahead. Um, Greg, you can go ahead and I'll, I'll help you.
All right, no problem. Good e- good evening, everyone. Um, so tonight, uh, they covered a lot of details on this. And I know the focus is about the draft D I R, so we'll keep it short. But since our last meeting of last June, um, we went over a lot of details in that meeting and we prepared, um, an attachment to tonight's agenda. It's attachment three and it responds to a lot of the concerns, but I just want to highlight a few of them tonight. And these are things that were requested. So the first three items, they're the landscape plan, cross-section, uh, water flows, bio, biofilters, uh, B K F engineers. All those details are now included and they're in the draft D I R. Um, but one of the big things we want to talk about tonight, and I'll let Rory speak on this. It's about, um, the concern of the two structures being too close to each other. So what we were able to do was to double the space. And the concern at the time was that we couldn't move the south building further south because it would encroach on the hundred foot buffer. So we moved the north building further north. And we were able to do that by reducing the amount of land that's being added to the auto dealership. So it opens up that view corridor. Um, I'll let him discuss more about those details, but I just wanted to give the heads up on it. Can we see further down the page there?
No.
Let's see. You can skip to the bottom because some of these things Jill already discussed. I don't ready to go over them again. Okay, let's see. Yeah. So here's my team tonight, uh, Rory, who's from Access Architecture. He'll be speaking. Also tonight is B K F engineers. They're here. Uh, so is the landscape architect and our biologist. So they're available for any questions that you might have tonight. Other than that, that's really all I have to speak about. But again, in the attachment, there is a lot of questions that people may have. And if they go through, look through that document, I think it'll answer a lot of things they have concerns about. So we can go with Rory. Is he on, Bridget?
Yeah, he's, he is. He should be in there. He's, um, he's raising his hand. I'm sorry. I need to get out to, I'm, I'm triple, I'm multitasking here on my screen, so, um, I apologize. I guess he didn't, I don't know if he didn't come. I moved him over, but I don't know what happened. I'm having.
Not here.
Yeah, he's coming over. I'm sorry. Um, tried it a little bit ago and it didn't work apparently. Same thing with Rick. There he is. Sorry, I'll, I'll bring up the presentation again.
So Rory O'Connell, you're on.
Hi, thank you very much. Um, as promised, I'll try and keep this very brief. Um, if you can see that next slide. I'll keep it quick.
Slide four.
This honestly shows, uh, the most important, uh, I think, change since the last time we, we talked to, um, talk to you all about this, um, in response to comments, uh, about sort of, um, slight lines and view corridors. We felt was appropriate to increase the spacing between the buildings. So we doubled it from sixteen feet to thirty-two to provide a much, um, more substantial break between the north and south buildings. The rest of the architecture, we still feel is, is appropriate for, for this site, uh, for this community. Um, but we wanted to, to, to make this break. Uh, and, and that's sort of the, the biggest issue I want to highlight today. We've got some perspective use of how that might look as well on, on the next slide. So you can see the top is what we showed you, um, last summer and lower is what we're posing right now. And honestly, that is, that is the only change we really want to talk about this evening. So we'll, we'll let you get back to deliberations, public comment. Thanks for, uh, thanks for your time.
Is it just me or did those look exactly the same?
They didn't.
They didn't. They're a little bit.
Can I ask, um, we. Sorry, can, can, can we put those slides back and put them in presentation mode, please?
Yes.
And could we actually have, uh, Rory, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name. Could, could you please just elaborate for thirty seconds on what the differences are between the two?
Yeah, just give me one second. My computer, um.
And I appreciate you trying, you're the brevity with which you're trying to do the presentation, but I think it's, um.
We, we found the limit of brevity. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we need to just spend a minute or two.
Yeah.
About what you're trying to accomplish there, please.
Yeah.
Sure.
If it's so, please, this is the chair.
I can pull it back up just one.
While we're doing that, um, fundamentally, the, the building is, is separated into, into two buildings, that north and a south building. We have a three-story building to the north and a two-story building with a more generous ground floor to the south. Um, we, we did that so we could create generous lobby, but also keep the ridge lines relatively low. Um, and there is a, a connection, a corridor at the first floor, the length of the two buildings. Um, even though they have an offset, uh, ground, uh, finished floor level. Um, and that's envisioned as, as a glassy connector, um, to maximize transparency through all the way is, you know, still a building. Um, and in a previous iteration that we would have shown, um, that was a sixteen-foot-long corridor, um, sixteen-foot gap between the two buildings. And in response to comment about it feeling like it's still one building rather than two, um, the team has looked at separating the building by an additional sixteen feet. So now it's a thirty-two foot gap. So.
Can you all see that? Okay, just want to make sure.
So just, just, just a, just a more pronounced separation between the two buildings.
So, so from the exterior of the building, the massing is the same. It's just that there's a large, you've doubled the gap between the two buildings.
That, that's exactly it. Yeah.
And have you changed the interior design at all as part of this or it's just the exterior?
Just the exterior and only this, only this, um, the length of this, this connector and the separation of the buildings. And, and that, that means moving the, the, the bike shop and the, the trash a little bit. Um, it's actually have a better access for the, uh, the pickup, uh, that's shown on the site plan. But it's, um, I think sort of the, the, the visual impact of that from Main Street is, is quite minimal.
So you, so we need to see that slide as well?
Yeah, so close to where that cursor is, um, uh, on the north end of the site, in north is to the right. Uh, whereas the trash used to face Main Street, now it faces, uh, plant left. So that little yellow gap there is where a truck can pull in and do pickup. Um, that's necessitated by moving the building, uh, further to the north.
No, I mean the blocking of the view. There you go.
And this is the view from Naomi Patridge, not from the crown of the street.
Right.
Do you have the view from the crown of the street with the, um, the ridge line reflected?
We do not.
Okay, thank you.
That's the concern.
I think the story polls might illustrate that.
Nope, they do. Doesn't, and the story polls reflect this view, one of these two views, correct?
The bottom one.
A step, step in here. The story polls reflect alternative two, which is the top, um, elevation, um, that you're seeing with the sixteen foot space between the buildings. The applicant has installed, uh, some additional markers out there, but I'm not sure if folks will know what they mean yet, um, trying to show what, what happened with a thirty-two foot gap. Um, in the event, if this is something that, um, moves forward, we will make sure to have additional, uh, visual materials about it. Um, from the perspective of what you've seen in visual simulations, however, uh, the front building doesn't move. And so what you're seeing in those simulations for the southern building, the two-story building, would be the same. It would be the, um, three-story building that would be pushed back another, um, approximately sixteen feet, although it's at a bit of a cant. So I'm not precisely sure, um, how, how it's going to come out. Staff has done some, um, kind of back of envelope thinking about, uh, visual resources. At this point, we believe it will be similar or better, but not worse. But it needs to be studied.
So just to, so I understand the, the, you know, the, the big change here between the, um, the two projects, the two proposed projects is this um, middle area change. But the view goes from significant and unavoidable impact to not significant and unavoidable impact from, um, viewpoints two and three. So I don't know when we're gonna, I, I didn't see that in here, but, um, I'm, I'm assuming.
Through the chair.
Yes.
The, um, the thirty-two foot gap has not been studied.
Okay.
Um, staff and, and the consultants are proposing to you in the draft D I R that, um, the project, which is represented here and, um, where, where the applicant's calling it new design, old design, that is not nomenclature that we're using in the environmental impact report. The old design is alternative two. It's been studied. It's presented in story polls and photo simulations are included in the document. The idea of having an option for more space between the buildings came from the applicant from two different, um, for two different reasons. One is that he received input from you in June a year ago. But we were not able to study a, an additional version of the project at this point in time for the draft D I R. It can be picked up in the final. And two is because the conclusion of the draft D I R was not yet known. And as it became known to the applicant that we had identified significant and unavoidable impacts related to aesthetics, the applicant and his design team started working on other ways to try to reduce them. We didn't identify a significant and unavoidable impact regarding ridge line views or viewpoints two or three relative to alternative two. Um, but we showed that to you and you saw how close it was. And so that is, um, motivating to the applicant to try to, um, address the concerns about that. And I know this is confusing, um, because we don't have this idea en- encapsulated in the E I R at this point. I hope, I hope that clarified things.
Okay. So, um, so, um, is the applicant done with this, um, presentation?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good. So, um, um, so we are going to move on to public comment. I, I would, I would just want to say, like, just to clarify, this is actually the perfect time to make an opinion heard. I really appreciate you guys hanging in there and, uh, to make your comments. Um, the presentation that was, um, that, the part of the presentation by Juliette was really designed to help people, um, sort of target their comment to sequo and to, um, this, to the E I R, to what we're talking about tonight. Because what we're talking about tonight is the E I R analysis and not so much the whole project and what the project means. Although I would say, if that's your comment, if that's what you want to comment about, um, now is a really good time to raise those issues. So, um, I appreciate you guys doing it and let's, um, let's get started. I'm sorry, Commissioner, Vice Chair Hernandez, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just, just wanted to clarify the E I R, what we're looking at and what the story polls are because I think we've covered a lot of ground and I don't want the public to misconstrue anything. So in the presentation we just saw from the applicant, um, he had two variations of alternative two. And my understanding is if you go to the site and you look at the story polls, the story polls are generally reflective of alternative two. Is that fair, Jill?
Excuse me, I needed tea. Um, yes, that is fair.
Great, okay. And so, um, alternative one has a more, um, substantial and imposing view, uh, as compared to alter- sorry, not alternative one. Alternative one is no project. The, uh, original project has a more substantial impact. Uh, and, uh, then in terms of the ridge line, then alternative two, which is what is reflected. uh, and, uh, then in terms of the ridge line, then alternative two, which is what is reflected again in the story polls that we see today.
Yeah.
Great, okay. Just wanted to clarify that before we went to public comment.
Okay, um, I would like to open a public comment. Bridget.
Okay, I'm, I'm seeing a few people raising their hand. I just wanted to reiterate, the virtual hands very helpful and that, um, if you need to, if you're on the phone, because we do have a couple of phones, star six to mute and unmute and star nine to raise and then raise your hand. So, we will get started here. Just wanted to let everyone know.
And there is a time limit.
Yes, three minutes. And I'll set the timer. Um, okay, so it looks like people are coming in. All right, so the first person I have is, uh, Kathy Colonto, and I will allow you to speak. And next in line would be, um, Carlisle or Carly Anne Young is in the next lineup. Go ahead, Kathy.
I've lived in Half Moon Bay for over thirty years. And I'm concerned about, it was stated that there are a hundred and two rooms and a hundred and eight parking spots. And I don't know if any of you are aware in the picture, one of the pics, the pictures, you showed one car on Main Street. If you drive down there on any given day or evening, cars are parked on both sides of the road all day and into the evening there. So I'm concerned about the parking. Where are all these people gonna park? And, um, I'm also, um, that is a big concern of mine. The second thing is, um, I like the open space of that area there. And the third thing is that this hotel looks like any other Hyatt hotel. It would seem to me that there could be some, could have been or could be some creativity in the design of this hotel. It, it just does, it's, it reminds me of what's across the street at Cameron's, that big ugly hotel over there. And I don't know how these hotels are getting passed to build, but, um, you know, we'll have two bookend ugly hotels. And, um, I'm also concerned about the, the traffic going in and out, that, uh, configuration that's just been put in. You know, with the light and all that is an accident waiting to happen and all it'll take is a couple lawsuits. So I prefer to see open space. You know, we have enough people coming into Half Moon Bay. And, um, but it has not been addressed about the parking. Where is, where are people gonna park? People at Main Street Housing cover both sides of the road and they have adequate parking in the back, which they, supposedly they use. So I'm just really, and I'm concerned about the height of this monstrosity. It's, um, I don't know, somebody's hands are gonna, if this passes, somebody's hands are gonna be greased, that's for darn sure. Anyway, that's what I've got to say. I appreciate you listening and I appreciate the hard work that you all put in. Thank you.
Thanks for waiting. Appreciate that.
Okay, um, next we have, um, Carlo Anne Young. And after her, um, or him will be, um, Alex Pasternak will be after him.
Thank you. Um, I didn't get a chance to read through the entire EIR, but I did watch your, um, presentation tonight. And in Jill's presentation, the second building had no height listed. And that was the taller three-story building. So if you could, you know, shout out what that was, it would be great. And one of the slides or presentations, I think it was view, view number four, that looked like a sound wall. I'm sorry. I think that was in the virtual guy's presentation. I, maybe it looked prettier in, in normal, once the thing gets built. But the main thing I wanna talk about tonight, and I don't even know if this is really part of the EIR, but I really feel it should be. And that is, I'm very concerned about the unavoidable impact of evacuation capabilities for the entire mid-coast. I live in Moss Beach and there's only one way out up north and that's through this narrow little Highway One and the Devil Slide Tunnel in Pacifica. And then, um, the other way to leave town is over ninety-two and both get really clogged on weekends. So this is a visitor-serving hotel, as I'm assuming. But back in, um, January of twenty-two, twenty-two, Lake County Judge denied the approval of a large resort project called Gannock because he felt county planners had failed to provide appropriate consideration of local emergency evacuation in a fire-prone area. Well, I don't know if the, um, developer knows, but we had a very bad fire just south of here in La Honda and, um, Pescadero, et cetera, on the South Coast. Back when the Half Moon Bay land use update was, um, finalized and rolled out closer to the beginning of COVID. I don't remember when exactly, but I'm sure you guys know. I noted that it seemed that the emergency evacuation did not seem to be a component of the land use plan. And I felt that might be negligence due to all the proposed increased density. So I noticed that each project on the mid-coast that gets approved, it's up and down the coast, always gets approved in a vacuum without considering the cumulative effect of the increase in population, visitors and vehicles of all the projects combined. I mean, that even includes the big Tenetus Creek Beach project that the county parks is planning. So I don't know if that's in your EIR in the fine print that I haven't gotten to yet. But mostly my concern is that the lack of any cogent existent emergency evacuation plan seems to be negligent in the planning process. When I last brought this up several years ago, I was told that a different, um, city update was coming. So, um, at that time, and the then-current plan would be to evacuate in place by the city manager. So could you address where in the analysis I can locate where this might be? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bridget.
Yes, next person is Alex Pasternak.
Alex, you're up. Alex, are you there?
Hello, can you? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
This is not Alex Pasternak, this is, uh, David Pasternak. Alex is our forty-one-year-old son, who came from the hospital back to the same residence where we are now on the coast side, which gives you some sense of our, our continuity here. I have previously provided, uh, commentary, um, and I submitted a detailed statement focusing on, uh, the traffic issue in, in particular, and I trust that you will be reviewing that. My basic point there was, um, that you really need to go back and, and look carefully at the analysis because it seems to me, uh, to be leaving out some basic factors. Most notably, uh, the baseline, uh, dealing with the morning commute. As we all know who live on the coast, that is not when we have the major traffic. It's weekends, uh, late afternoon, when we don't even have, uh, gridlock, we often have just complete stoppage of, of any traffic. I, I noted in, in my written comments that one of my neighbors had to go over Tenetus Creek, uh, when she went into labor. Fortunately, uh, she had her baby at the, uh, Kings Mountain, um, fire station. But you don't wanna have people, uh, jeopardizing their welfare because we are gridlocked and it's only gonna get worse. So I think you need to go back and look at that. I think there's some odd assumptions there, um, uh, something which is identified as counterintuitive by your own analysts, uh, counterintuitive, uh, saying that in fact, uh, this, uh, development may reduce the traffic problems. But again, um, those are contained in my written statements. I wanna go back though and focus on, uh, a statement made by, I think, one of the first speakers, which was, essentially, don't look at the details. The details seem to be trying to put lipstick on a pig. We're talking here about a more basic aesthetic. We're talking about people on the coast side who cherish this environment we live in, who appreciate the small-town character, the views, the openness. And there is absolutely no way that you can mitigate the problems, the, the hideous problems that are gonna be created by having a large structure as our gateway. And we all recognize that. Um, I'm not sure, uh, of the legal authority you have to permit a development which is recognized as having problems that can't be mitigated. But that's acknowledged. You may be able to airbrush it a little bit with the second alternative, but the bottom line is, you really don't wanna have, as your legacy, as planning commissioners, something which the community rejects, something which is an eyesore, something which is going to be seen as absolutely inappropriate to, to our environment. So I think you have to go back and look at this more carefully. There's gonna be development in one form or another, but you really have to be cautious how you decide to approve that. Thank you.
Um, also, we did, we did get your letter, so thank you.
Sure.
The thoughtful letter, right?
Next we have is Judy Taylor. And following that will be Larry Gatlin, uh, Gandelman.
Judy.
Go ahead, Judy.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I've had out of sync with my speakers before. Um, I'm gonna be real short tonight.
That was really short.
Hold on, hold on, she got muted. Judy, there you go. Sorry about that. I think it.
Start it again.
There you go. Go ahead. Yeah.
My digital karma sucks. Basically, you know, for many years, um, applicants came in with something and they had to run a gauntlet and it was an exercise in masochism. And so it's, it's really refreshing tonight to hear thoughtful responses, uh, both from the, the commissioners and from the public. Uh, one of the things that we have to remember, uh, when we're looking at these kinds of projects is that, we who live here on the coast side are a pestilence as far as the coastal commission is concerned. The sooner that they can get rid of us, the better. Our land uses are to be designated to make the coast side more attractive and more accessible for the people in Fresno, not for the people who live here. And it's, it's a pox on our community when it comes to local control. And I really appreciate what this applicant has done to try to address what the community is wanting while recognizing that there's very little, um, latitude and what they can do with the property. So I just wanna thank you for it and, um, encourage you to keep working. Something is gonna get built there. This is a, a property owner that cares about our community. I'd much rather see them do this project than somebody from outside the community. And so I would just encourage you to keep working with the applicant to make something that, that's as good as it can be. So thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thanks, Judy. Next we have, um, Larry Gandelman, followed by Hazel Jonas.
Larry Gandelman.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. So like the, uh, the former caller, I've been a resident of Half Moon Bay for thirty-plus years. Uh, live very close to the project site. I lived over on Arroyo Leon for the better part of fifteen years. And I've been following this project and what, uh, the applicant has been trying to do for the better part of six years. So again, Half Moon Bay is always going to have the traffic issue. It's always going to have the emergency egress issue. As a resident of Half Moon Bay, those are some of the things that you accept when you move to Half Moon Bay. You accept the traffic, you accept a variety of the things balanced by the community and a great place to raise your family. So these are long-term, term issues that this applicant is not going to solve. So again, I've seen this applicant go through multiple iterations of this project, listening to the community, listening to some of the people unwarranted, with unwarranted bashing of the project. Yet he's continued to do everything he can to address these, to change the aesthetics of the project. And again, here we are, six years later. And again, with an eighteen-month construction schedule, plus taking these documents from SD all the way through construction documents through permitting, it's a ten-year commitment to him. So again, you know, there are always gonna be people that are gonna be against it, but at some point, this really needs to move forward. The southern gateway, in my opinion, really isn't a southern gateway, right? We have the one little statue there that represents your entry from the south to the north into Half Moon Bay. And I think we can do better than that. And again, you know, the lifeblood of those folks that are on Main Street, that are the merchants, can use those, those visitors to support their shops, to support their stores. So again, you want a vibrant Main Street, well, you're gonna need people there that support them. And again, locally, you try and support them, but that's not enough. And again, you know, I would just request that you support this project because Half Moon Bay needs it.
Thank you very much.
Next we have Hazel Jonas, followed by Rick Sutherland.
Hello, my name's Hazel Joannis and I am a resident of Half Moon Bay for the last twenty years. I have many more comments than what I'm gonna present today, but I'd like for you to consider just these few at this point in time. I'll go right to the point. The staff report states that the purpose of this meeting, uh, today is to receive comments in the draft DIR, which will lead to the preparation of the final EIR and public hearing to consider certification of the EIR, adoption of CEQA findings and approval of the project. This one and only meeting to receive public comments is thirty-six days premature. The DEIR, um, common period ends on September thirteen, twenty-twenty-two. The city might consider hosting several public forums in the various HMB neighborhoods to allow the public ample time to review the DEIR, ask questions and then provide their comments to the planning commission. Only after the city has proactively solicited com- community engagement and after DI comment period has ended, should, should the city begin the preparation of the final DIR. My next comment is, um, the staff report also, um, states that the ER must analyze a no-project alternative as well as reason, a reasonable range of project alternatives. However, the alternative is, must also reflect feasible build project alternatives. Could the applicant at this point in time consider additional feasible build alternatives that don't, um, result in significant impacts? Or, uh, and perhaps, uh, result in minor impacts? Or is this project bound by the highest, by the Hyatt Place standard design? My next question, my next question is, is regarding the Hyatt Place project. Is this applicant bound only by the Hyatt Place Hotel? Or is the city also entertaining other proposals by other, um, hotel enterprises? Why are we only considering the Hyatt brand with the Hyatt brand design? And then the next question is, how did the city determine that this hotel brand will provide the lowest cost, low-cost accommodations? Apparently, this is one of the city priorities that the, this alternative was measured against. And, you know, what is the price point for low-cost accommodation? The Santa Cruz Hyatt Place ranges, uh, Hyatt Place, uh, price point ranges between four hundred and nineteen to four hundred and eighty-one dollars. Is this considered low-cost accommodations for, let's just say, people in Sacramento or Fresno? Or forever, wherever else these people, people are coming to enjoy the coast? So I'd like to consider that. Explain the specific terms on how hotel meets the, uh, city's objectives to promote lower-cost coastal access. Thank you.
Thank you, Hazel. And thanks for getting her in right under the wire. That was really good.
Next we have Rick Southern, followed by Leslie.
Rick Southern, you're up. Are you there?
Yes. Are we good?
Yep, go ahead.
All right, good. Thank you very much. So I, I just have a question for Jill. I read the executive summary and it seemed there were a whole lot of areas that were significant and unavoidable impacts. But you'd mentioned in your presentation that alternative two did not have a significant and unavoidable conflict with the land use plan. I wanted to get further clarification on that.
That's something that will happen during our deliberation. We're, we're gonna, the planning commission is gonna talk.
Okay, so just some, uh, further comments on the project. I, I am sympathetic to, uh, Mr. Jameson for. I, I am sympathetic to Mr. Jameson for spending many, many years trying to get this project through. And, you know, what speaks to me on that is that maybe it's just not the right project for Half Moon Bay and, and for the piece of property that the project is, is being designed for. And when you showed the views of the Alternative 2 and then you expanded the space between the two buildings from 16 to 32 feet, the difference was almost imperceptible, which is visually because of the magnitude of the project. It's kind of like trying to put a whale into an aquarium. And I, I think that's probably one of the reasons why it's been so difficult to, to get the project through. It just doesn't fit with the stipulations that are put forward in, in the Half Moon Bay land use plan. So that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let me see, we have, next is Leslie, followed by her will be Brian Holt. So Leslie, you should be able to unmute. There you go.
I'm Leslie Hunt, I'm sorry I didn't give my last name. I've lived here with my family for over 30 years, so I'm pretty familiar with the coast side. I've lived in Moss Beach, Miramar, and have been on Kelly Street since 1991. I do agree with a lot of the people that have commented so far. But first of all, I'm really surprised that the only significant impacts that were identified by the EIR were aesthetics. And again, I agree with the last caller or commenter. I think the view corridor is kind of ridiculous. 16 feet versus 32, I think that was a kind of a ridiculous thing. Or change, rather. I think the most important impacts, as I agree with Mr. Pasternak, is the traffic issues, storm drainage and sewage issues. And I don't really understand why these haven't been identified a significant impact in the EIR. Because we have, many of us on the coast side have identi, have seen and seen, have identified, seen and experienced the great impact, as has been expressed by the other commenters, on traffic flooding, especially where I live on the west side, and major sewage issues, which are hopefully being addressed. But I haven't really seen that. Because even if it's 102 rooms, these people are flushing toilets, taking showers, and the rest of us, I know that there's water allocated for hotels, but we are trying to cut back on our water usage. So I'm not quite sure about the whole idea of another hotel on the coast side. I know that this is separate from the EIR, but I would like to know what the occupancy rates of the current hotels are. And do we really need a hotel? And I also appreciate the comment that the first caller said, commented on regarding evacuation plans. Like where would these people go? Are they going to go uphill to the salt box house? We, on Kelly, we have to go up to the graveyard. I mean, is there enough room for everybody to go up to those areas? That's a little confusing to me and it's kind, I never really even thought about that before. And in terms of aesthetics, I agree with all the other commentators. It kind of looks like a barracks or a prison to me. And the simulated, I don't think the fellow had enough time for the simulated design because it kind of looked, it was really pathetic. So, thank you, and I will send my comments in writing.
Thank you, Leslie.
Okay, next we have Brian Holt, followed by Tom Carey. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you very much, commissioners, Bridgette and Jill. Good to see you all. Brian Holt, I've been a resident of Half Moon Bay for some 13 years now. And I remember when I first moved into this community, attending a meeting at the, at the train devotee at the Johnston House and just all this talk about the need to activate our southern gateway and to really activate Main Street to support our local businesses and the need to do that. And I've watched this project over the years as it's come through and seen sort of a lot of really thoughtful input that's been put into it, a lot of consternation over the design and the loss of the, the, or the potential impacts with regards to views of the hills. You know, there's a saying in CEQA, you, you kind of, you know, you attack everything you can, whether it's transportation or biology or hydrology. And these are things that can be sort of addressed through mitigation. And when you lose, or when you, when you can't necessarily attack anything else, you go to the visual resources and you attack the aesthetics of a project. And that's because it's very, it's subjective, right? One person's impact is, is another person's visual benefit. And I would suggest that currently the situation on the site isn't great. It's a fallow field and we're looking at an auto dealership. And I frankly would welcome an attractively designed facility there and a facility that could support what is an outdoor recreation-based economy in this community, something that supports our agriculture through purchasing local food, something that provides visitor services and access to the coast. And really, that demand is only going to increase. You know, COVID-19 and everything else has just really increased demand for public open spaces. Climate change is going to continue to increase demand for people to visit the coast. As it gets hot inland, people are going to want to come to the coast side. And we're blessed to live here. We are truly privileged to live here. And I really think that we have an obligation to welcome and open our community to people who do, who want to visit. And I think we need to do that in a sustainable, thoughtful way by providing development where development makes sense. And development makes sense at this site. And may, visitor-serving uses may not make sense in other places, like west of Highway 1. They may not, we may not want to have short-term rentals in our community. But this is a site that's been zoned and designated for commercial use. This applicant's gone through Architectural Advisory Committee and Planning Commission hearings and received significant amount of public comments. There's going to be a section, a fragment of this community that is going to oppose any development or is going to continue to have consternation about the design. But I think there's a time that we need to step up and actually embrace something and support something and really, really own it. So I, I fully support this project. I look forward to providing additional comments and I thank you all for your service.
Thank you. And next up we have is Tom Carey, followed by Jim Marco, Marco. So go ahead, Tom. Should be able to unmute.
Tom Carey, you there?
There he is. Go ahead, Tom. Oh, Tom, are you there? You're unmuted, so you can speak. Yeah, muted, so. Tom, are you there?
Wait a second.
Tom Carey is up first speaking.
See if he can do it.
There he is. Do you, are you good? No? Okay, I'm going to mute you. And if you want to speak, you can raise your hand again. I think it may, maybe accidentally. The next person I have is Jim, I'm going to chop his last name, Mercio. Or Mercio. Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, it's Jim Mercilio, I appreciate it, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
No worries on butchering the name, it's not the first time. Listen, I'm a longtime resident of Pacifica, actually, and a frequent visitor to Half Moon Bay. I currently reside in Vacaville. So I'm one of those guys who brings his family down to Half Moon Bay is always looking for an opportunity to, to house temporarily in a hotel situation and can't always afford the rich Carlton, is, is great of a property that is. And I think for years, Half Moon Bay has needed precisely this development that you guys have been brought before you and is being proposed. So first of all, I wanted to say hats off to the commission for your thorough review. Kudos to the applicant for incorporating the suggested and recommended changes that all you have made. I think the application and the design is quite thoughtful. It's elegant. I, I hear a lot of these folks thinking that, oh my God, this, this looks ugly. It's this big, huge monstrosity. I, I've been watching this project for a little bit and somebody made a comment of hotels, you didn't want the, the hotel of the coast to look like hotels in Vacaville. And I kind of chuckled in the fact that I live there now and I know exactly what you're talking about. So I thought that the application and the design and really your, your input has shaped this thing into such a, I think, a, a great opportunity. I look forward to visiting and staying there. I think some of your traffic problems will go away with those of us that, that do visit, who are going to stay there as a result of it. So the substantial impact that you guys talk about, I actually think improves your gateway dramatically. I drive Highway 1, I have all my life. And to see that, that southern view doesn't frighten me. And in terms of the, the views of you wanting to protect the ridgeline, I get it. But this hotel is something that I think will be well-received, especially from visitors outside of your city. And to those that commented, don't want any development, I understand that too. And you're going to get those number of, of folks that, that want to have that view. But I, I really wanted to just stay in tonight and say hats off to the commission again. I think your review was thoughtful. I thought the applicant's incorporating those suggested, recommended and changes. I think the changes have been responsible. And I just wanted to say thanks for that. And thanks for inviting me back to your ci, your city. Pacifica was my hometown, but I, I played baseball in Half Moon Bay a little bit growing up as a kid. And I look forward to bringing my family to your city and having this opportunity. So thanks for your time, I appreciate your effort in this regard. And again, congratulations and thank you for being thoughtful in this review.
Thanks for coming.
We do have, Tom Carey did raise his hand again, so I'm going to allow him to, to jump on here. Let me just make one change. And go ahead, Tom, you should be able to unmute now and, and speak if you'd like to. There you go.
Still can't hear you, Tom Carey.
Yeah, we're still not hearing you. I don't know, I don't think you're on your cell, it doesn't look like it. So I just wanted to make sure. You're un-raising and raising your hand, but you are unmuted, so you should be able to talk. Your speakers might not be, under the mute, unmute, there's a, an arrow and you can open it up and it may help you to figure out that you might not be on the right microphone and choose another microphone on your phone.
We still do have a couple other speakers. Can we, can we come back?
I don't have any other speakers at this.
Oh, we're waiting for Tom, okay.
Yeah, actually, wait, we have one other. So let me just leave him unmuted and see if he can get his speaker or his thing. And I have actually multiple people raising their hand now. So let's just continue. Next I have is Paul McGregor. Go ahead, Paul, you should be able to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm doing good.
Good.
I, I'd like to speak about the alternate number two. It, it, it looks to me that they've really gone above and beyond a call of duty to, to lower it down, push it back, put some separation in between the buildings and actually give you a little more of a view towards the hills and so forth. I drive from San, San Gregorio every day. I'm looking at these story poles every time I go by. I've been on this coast side for 40-plus years, 40 years. And this is a good development for the community. And actually, the Jameson family has really put a, put a good fourth effort to bring something really good to the community. And the aesthetics of the building have really come along. This is going to give a lot of opportunity for the people who live across the street and the affordable housing to have jobs there, bike paths, landscaping, Highway 1, Main Street and so forth. It also allows people to stay at Half Moon Bay and not be driving over 92 or 84 in my case, where I see a lot of people going that way at times. The, the Jameson family has been here for a long time. I think they should have the opportunity to build, build their hotel. And my hats off to you guys for listening to everybody and putting a good project forward. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
I'm not sure, I haven't heard from Tom, so I'm just kind of leaving him unmuted. And if he can work it out, I hope he can. Let me just go to the next person. Roy Solome, you can speak now.
Hey, Roy.
Go ahead, Roy.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Roy.
Okay, great, thanks. Hi, folks, you know, I've watched the development of this project for over five years. We have more visitor-serving traffic flowing into the coast side every year. It jams up the roads in neighborhoods to the north of 92 on weekends and on the weekdays as well. That, that traffic burden is not going to stop. We have to deal with it. We do not have huge traffic jams south of town. I think the best way to address our chronic visitor traffic globally is to look for ways to draw more of it to the south of 92 with appropriate visitor-serving projects like this one. This project is the right kind of project in the right location to serve the long-term planning needs for the town. Yeah, I think it moves us in the right direction. And, you know, I'll add this, I, I drive past the property frequently. I think Alternative 2 and the story poles I see look a lot better than what was originally presented five years ago. I think it fits and I don't think it's out of scale. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Yeah.
Thanks, Roy.
Next I have is Happamay Bridge, which I believe is David Oblovy, and I will allow him to speak.
David, are you there?
Yeah, sorry to ask me a question, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, I'll change that in my phone, I'm using my phone tonight. It's obviously the wrong identifier. First, to pick a fight with my good friend Roy Solome, I live 2.3 miles south of town. And on a busy Sunday, I can't drive to town because the traffic is backed up past our home. So the traffic issue is universal on the coast side. I don't think it's just characterized north or south. That said, I have also followed this project since its inception, since the first presentation was made to the planning commission, either five or six years ago, it seems like forever. And what I have seen and witnessed is a responsible developer working to accommodate the demands of the public and the community in which he lives, who lives in the community and is very community-oriented, who has modified the project on countless occasions. The last time I, I met with Greg, he, he was carrying around a custom siding that was recycled, I can't remember if it's barn lumber or fence lumber, but basically he was looking at trying to surface the face of the building in natural materials that are recycled or recovered. That's his level of commitment to this project and, and to making it in scale and in scope for the community. If we based every project on whether we liked the way it looks, nothing would ever get built because 50% of people are going to love it, 50% of people are going to hate it, you're never going to get anywhere. Emergency egress, 140 cars in the scope of a, of a, of a community-wide evacuation is irrelevant, it's a drop in the bucket. Same thing with sewage. You're not going to fix the sewage problems that happen in their faces and they are not trivial by denying this project from existing, especially since it's going to exist one way or the other, I'm guessing. Finally, a gateway. If that field is an appropriate gateway for the community, then the first gateway is way down in Santa Cruz when you hit your first field coming northbound, because it's all fields, 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 fields. We do not have a southern gateway in Half Moon Bay. I think it goes without saying that we need one and I think that this project is an incredibly appropriate southern gateway for weary travelers, for people who want to know they actually got somewhere. Doesn't matter, it's an in-scope project that I think is very appropriate for Half Moon Bay. So I want to thank the planning commission, both present and past, for your work on this, staff as well. This has been a long haul and it's not over yet, but I hope you're going to get to a place where we'll get this development completed and we can go on from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Still not getting Tom any thing. So if I, if Tom, you can't speak, you can go ahead and put things in writing and send it to Jill or myself or to the Hyatt Hotel email, the happy to, to share.
And is there anyone else out in the audience who wants to talk? Anybody else wants to speak, raise your hand now.
I have one more, Chad Hooker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead, Chad.
Okay.
I am an AAC member, but I'm speaking for myself, not the Architectural Advisory Committee. Always fair to assume that I have some awareness of this project because it's been in front of the AAC. What I wanted to speak about specifically is the Upland Hill view shed issue that appears to be in the EIR as a significant and unavoidable impact on these views. The project would have that impact. In my opinion, the view in question is already largely blocked by two rows of street trees. by two rows of street trees, which were required by the city there on both sides of Main Street and by the theater and by the two-story affordable housing along Main Street. As an AAC member, when this came in front of us, the southern gateway intersection was being built. So I had the opportunity to actually stand in the median of the highway and look at it from the perspective you would have from a car going either north or south. I walked up and down that K rail and took a pretty good look at these very views. And I need to mention that they're already very limited by existing buildings and trees. Not to mention that this view is from cars moving at a pretty good speed. So in my opinion, views should be, should not be considered in the abstract. The real views of the Euphon Hills should be checked out. They're not significantly impacted further by this project. And I just wanted to bring that up because I'm certain it'll be in your deliberations this evening. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Chad.
Thanks. Okay, I think that's all we have. We don't have. So we're back, back to you, Chair Warren.
Okay, so I know we haven't actually talked about this yet. But it is a little after nine o'clock. Do you guys want to take a break? Or do you want to get started? I see a break. Everybody wants to take a break. Should we take ten minutes?
Through the chair, did you want to close the the public hearing?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. So sorry, Tom Carey, but we are closing public comment. And we are back to our meeting in which I think we're gonna take a ten-minute break. Do we need to vote on that? Or can we just do it?
No, you don't. You can just.
Correct. Let's take a quick ten-minute break and we'll come right back. My video was the same.
You just came back online.
You just came back. There's actually quite a few attendees still. Nice hanging in there. I like it.
It's a barn burner. Everybody wants.
Maybe two on the nose for Happamay Bay, Rick.
All right.
Yep. Well, we got everybody except Bridget.
Through the chair, well, we're reassembling here. Bridget's been trying to get Tom Carey back in via phone just to give him a chance because to accommodate him. I don't know if it worked, so we'll find out. We are prepared to answer your quest, some of the questions that came up. If you would like us to do that, we can be quick.
I have been speaking to him and helping him out, and he said that he will write in his support. And he is very supportive of the project, so he'll get he'll get us in his comments.
All right, thank you. So we got a lot to talk about. Can we reconvene? Are we just, since we didn't vote to not reconvene, we're just reconvening. So we're back. Hello, everyone. We're back. So as I understand it, we have a really narrow scope here, right? I'm talking to Jill for a second. This is the, we're deciding whether the EIR, EIR analysis of the original design is adequate, if the analysis is adequate. And that's not looking at the new design. That's just looking at the old design. Is that right? Or do I have that backwards?
You've got most of it. Let's let's re reframe it a little bit. So one of the, our our Sequoia consultants are gonna respond to a number of these questions. But one of the ones that they're gonna respond to, and I'm I'm gonna go ahead and jump ahead because it's about process. There was a comment about it's important to not prepare the final EIR at this point. That is correct. We are not preparing the final EIR. This is not a decision-making meeting. We are in a circulation period with the draft environmental impact report with an extended period of time for everyone to give comments. We wouldn't expect everyone to have already reviewed the entire document at this point. The intention for this meeting is to support people in their review. Staff is available to meet with anybody. I've already been talking to a lot of community members who have been looking for different parts of the document, and we're here for you as a resource. And nothing's going to become a final EIR and tell the comment period is closed, which I I really believe we presented, and that is on September thirteenth at five o'clock PM. So back to your question, Chair Warren. Before you tonight is this draft EIR, and you're in the flow of the process for determining whether or not the document adequately evaluates the environmental impacts of the project and the alternatives that were presented in the document. The applicant showed you a variant on alternative two. It was not, it only had one change in it. So I I don't want to get distracted by that. I think it's really important to focus on that EIR. If you're if you're interested in that variant, we're we're happy to hear about that and work with the applicant. Any modifications or other alternatives that would be considered at this point? Really, the focus should be on whether or not they would reduce any of the impacts that were identified in the draft EIR. And so that's that's the context. And if our city attorney here wants to clean any of that up and and the, she she can stay, say this so so clearly. And then our Sequoia folks are here, and they do want to answer the other Sequoia questions. And I have a couple other notes just to set the record straight because people asked us some questions.
Right. But we also do need to get into deliberation a little bit because we, nobody's talked about anything yet. I do want to just be clear, though, this small change that you're talking about, the sixteen feet to thirty-two feet has resulted in this significant and and unavoidable impact from viewpoints two and three.
No, I'm gonna interrupt you. I I really think that has distracted everyone. Yeah, we haven't evaluated the that variant that was presented by the applicant of increasing the space between the buildings. That has not been studied.
So we're not talking about that today, then?
You can if you want to, but we need to be clear that it has not been studied and no statements have been made in the draft document about that variant.
So there's nothing for you to say?
Unless you're interested in having us explore it. I think your discussion, we'll we'll see what your fellow commissioners think about that maybe in their comments. Maybe it won't come up. We're hearing our Spanish translator. And I I see a commissioner wants to speak, so I will stop.
Yeah, maybe we can do, talk a little bit first and then we can answer those questions. Because I know that that's a burning issue. But I know that everybody here has questions, so. Commissioner Benjamin has your hand up. He has his hand up. So let's start there.
So thank you. I I want to start by trying to test my understanding of what we're gonna accomplish tonight and, you know, mesh that against what Jill said and what Winter might say and what my colleagues think. So what I heard Jill say about us being in the flow of figuring out what's complete. To me, the operative word in that expression was flow. So we haven't heard from, we haven't got all the public comment, we haven't got staff consideration. We are in absolutely no position to make a judgment about whether this document is adequate.
Right.
What we can do is say, I heard the public talk about this. Or, you know, maybe I didn't hear the public, but as I read the document or I heard the staff report, I thought about that. And to me, those are things that ought to be seen within the scope of the environmental document. So not making judgments about whether the project is good or not certainly, whether we should approve it or not certainly. Or whether this document, this EIR is is complete. But just pressing the boundaries of where this document needs to be expanded or detailed, whether there are policies or areas that we don't feel the document has addressed yet. That's my sense of the kind of comments that we should be providing tonight. Does that make sense?
No, that sounds right. Yes. Jill? Okay. You got it.
Okay.
That's the narrow scope that we're.
Okay, thank you. Then I'd like to launch into my narrow scope. So first, I really appreciate the comments, whether people like the project or hated the project. And I appreciated the work from our consultants. Thank you for for this work. I appreciated it all. And I also appreciated the applicant's presentation. I did find myself looking for some areas that I don't see yet. And maybe I'm just not seeing them. Maybe I'm not wearing the right lenses to see them, and you can help me think that through. But in some of the written and in tonight's spoken comments, I I heard people talking about the ideas of view that are expressed in aesthetics. But their letters were specifically focused on the incompatibilities with cited policies of the land use plan. Now, why is that important from a sequel perspective? To me, that's important because there's a section in the sequel checklist independently of aesthetics that asks whether there's anything in the project that is not compatible with the land use plan. So I'll grant that the issue has been sort of subjectively raised in the aesthetic area. So we're gonna get a chance to talk about it. But if I were the member of the public who said, I don't think it's compatible with your land use plan, and I didn't even see the land use plan incompatibility item identified, even if it was just long enough to say, you know, we heard that and we think that we're going to address it as part of our comments on aesthetics. But just to acknowledge that we heard it and that their concern is in the public record. Because whether we have it in the EIR now or not, it's in the public record they've written about. The next concern that I wanted to address was the the question about viewpoint four. I appreciate the reasoning that went into seeing that is not specifically protected under LCP policies. But I I would respectfully suggest that there may be more general policies such as Coastal Act three oh two five one or Policy nine twelve that don't speak specifically to that particular vantage point. But they talk about areas of scenic value. And they talk about the value that we're placing on the vicinity of the Town Boulevard, for example. And so I'd like to see some just some consideration in the document about whether that vantage point of pedestrians on the trail is something that we should that we should treat the same way we're treating some of the other areas that are, as Jill rightfully pointed out, are specifically identified as locations that we value. We had several speakers tonight talk to us about circulation and safety. Some of the points were you could hear the concern in their voices. There was some, there was some poignancy there. And I believe that there are sections, again, with respect to the city's plans. I I suspect that since the safety element is part of the general plan, that our document needs to, it should address those concerns. So I'd kind of like to hear more about that. And this is not me judging that it's a showstopper or that it's a nothing burger. It's just, I heard the public talk about it. I think we ought to respond to the public's interest in that. Because that's what the document, as I understand it, is supposed to do. In alternative two, and I'll, I want to confess that I have not read through the entire document. Just for members of the public who didn't, who weren't with us at the very beginning of the meeting. I was de-stigmatizing the fact that I got to experience COVID firsthand. And so I've had a little bit of a brain fog this week, having gotten through the whole document, but I'm getting there. And I understand the change in the intensity on the hotel portion of the site. But the proposal talks about changing the development of adjacent parcels too. And I think that our analysis of that alternative, first of all, I for one would like to see more of it. I would like to one, I would like to see it analyzed. I'm not sure. It's premature to say whether I think it's a preferred alternative or not, but I'm interested in learning more about it. And I think it needs to reflect, as I understand Sequoia, not just the proposed project, but also the reasonably foreseeable development that's to occur. And looking at what is specifically identified for those other areas feels to me to be reasonably foreseeable. Perhaps the analysts will have a different point of view, but that's my my two cents on that subject. And I, further, I just say, you know, there may be other people in the woodwork who want to who may want to comment on this project. We've certainly received some substantial comments. And I just want to chime in that the date that was identified for for providing comments, the comment period, when it closes, it's it's pretty closed. I mean, people will listen, but if you expect staff to be, you know, the city to have to respond to those comments, you need to get your comments in before the close date. The cardinal sin of commenting, making sequel comments, is to make them late. So members of the public who want to comment, having gotten around to it, the window is still open. Staff is still listening. Your planning commission is still listening. Don't miss the opportunity to comment before the close period. The rest of my stuff is kind of details, Dave, so I'm gonna step back and let my colleagues speak. Thanks for giving me the first shot.
Right. I expected, I expected everybody to turn to the voting. Who wants to talk? So we got Commissioner Riddick.
So I'll defer to Commissioner Gossett. I think she beat me by half a second.
Wow, you guys are so polite.
Thank you, Commissioner Riddick. Thank you, Jill and Julie and Greg and to the public for the presentation today. And definitely thank you to the public for all your comments. And Jill, in the staff report, you did say this was a complicated EIR, and I do agree with that. And I wish that it wasn't complicated, but it is what it is right now. I want to make just one general comment because it might impact those that are gonna continue to read this is that I could not find an appendix for the acronyms. And there were inconsistencies within the report. Sometimes acronyms were defined at first use, and then other times they were never, they were never defined. So I was Googling them. But I was able to figure it out, but it just slows you down when you're trying to read the report. And I think it's just a general housekeeping item that would make it easier. to understand, especially some of the technical discussions within the report. And then, you know, I don't know if this is the time to bring up a question of about something that Jill, you wrote in our staff report. It's not in the EIR. But and if it's the wrong time, you know, we can talk about it another time. But on page, oh, I want to go on page seven of your staff report. You, and I'm discussing alternative two. You said that there is a proposal for the residential component to subdivide the site for future residential development with an approximate build out of 20 units. And and then on the following page, you say that land use policy does not allow subdivisions that would result in parcels located wholly within the Esha and/or their buffers. And the biologists had found another wetland, I guess, when they walked on the proposed residential site nearby. So I I wanted like to understand that, like, does that type of subdivision occur and on a ministerial level? Or does the commission work on that? I I don't know because I'm new to this process, so I just wanted to try and understand that. And what else? And then I did have a question about rezoning. So, you know, what is the situation of how we consider the three parcels and rezone within the PUD? And that that's just one question about that. And then if we're looking at alternative two, should housing have its own EIR? And should we look at alternative two as like the new hotel that they're proposing with 102 rooms compared to what they had previously proposed? And let's see, I had some other general, let's see. On section four, 14 through 18, actually, maybe it's just four, 14. There's just an area within the EIR. It said schools, question mark, and parks, question mark, and other public facilities. And it it looked like maybe they, I didn't know if that was supposed to be there, but it looks like it might not have been studied. And then the traffic study that was done seemed insufficient in that it didn't cover worst case conditions such as holidays, maybe looking at every other season. We have a lot of traffic that comes in for pumpkin, you know, when we have the pumpkins in the fields. So I know they studied, it looked like they studied May and July, but we didn't study all seasons. So to get a better handle on, you know, when you look at the data on a level of service, it looks like the hotel isn't going to impact any level of cert, well, I don't want to say it's not going to impact. But we were within what the standard that is defined by the city of LOS E and very, I think, one or two cases where it was an F. And it, I don't know, it just seems like at other times of the year, I cars sit in traffic for a long time. And I just thought that the traffic study was insufficient. And I think that's about it in terms of my comments. I'm trying to just comment on the EIR. And I don't know if that zoning question or subdivision was something that we should talk about now. Thank you.
Commissioner Riddick.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to echo my colleagues. My thanks and appreciation for all the members of the public who have participated in this process tonight and beyond with very thoughtful comments. Also to staff and the consultants for a lot of hard work, and also to the applicant and his team for for everything they've been doing for some years now. As a side note, the the thing that we don't want to get distracted about, the proposed modification, increasing the separation of the buildings, 16 feet to 32 feet, I'd be very interested to see that be developed. I think that the slide that was shown of that, the simulation slide, was very poor in its size, and it didn't do justice to what that would really look like. So if that goes forward, I would encourage the applicant and/or staff to work on a better rendition of that. So I had a few questions that came to mind as I read the draft. And that's all I'll talk about tonight. The first, and I'd be happy to to hear answers to these questions at staff's convenience, whether it's tonight or sometime down the road is fine. But the the written public comments in in one place on the draft seem to me to raise some doubts about the confidence that exists in the wetlands delineation on the east side of of Highway One. And I don't know exactly where that's coming from, but I wondered whether the the new work that was done by the biologist last year, whether that confirmed the delineation of the of the wetlands that is mapped in the in the Sequa document. And and more generally, what was the scope of the biologist's work in 2021? I have another question about the, at the hearing 13 months ago, we had a bit of robust discussion about possibility of street trees along Main Street and Highway One. And I was kind of surprised not to see that in the plans for for the Highway One edge of the property. Obviously, that wouldn't affect the the height of the hotel and the and the views to the ridge lines. But some of the opinions about the massing of the buildings, it seems to me, would benefit from trees along Highway One as well as the, perhaps the experience of the guests looking out to the west at the highway. Thirdly, I'd also be, I'd be interested if if we have, if staff or the applicant has data about heights of other structures in that general neighborhood, sort of the southern half of downtown and the tower at the fire station relevant to the proposed height of the two hotel buildings. And I have a few more that are not quite as germane to the EIR, so I'll stop, I'll stop there for now. Thank you.
I also did wonder about the the height of the the fire tower as well. I mean, driving past it, it stands out. And it would be nice to not have it stand out. Never really liked that. So. Vice Chair Hernandez.
Thank you. I'd like to echo the comments and also greatly appreciate the public dialogue on this. Focusing on the EIR, I think there's a couple of things I'd like to call out. One is the context in which we look at the ridgeline is, you know, it's very important. And I think it's important to be really clear in the document. What is the impact that the alternative two has on the ridgeline from the city's analysis perspective? It's, I think some people have missed that point, and I so I hope that city staff can incorporate that into the final report. The second thing is that it's important to think about the view of the ridgeline in the context of our LUP. I think Jimmy called out 912 as a section earlier. And there's language that pertains to the Town Boulevard concept and the priorities that we put into the land use plan. And so I do think it's important to provide some of that context as, you know, there is a priority of development on the south end of of the city. I just need to make sure that, you know, in terms of consistency with the LUP, we just, that concept of the Town Boulevard isn't lost because it's probably one of the most consistent topics that came up when we went through the G-PAC. Is this is something that, you know, was brought up over and over and over again. We also have obligations under 30213 of the Coastal Act and 30212.5 to provide public accommodations, public trails, and to provide lower cost housing. I'm not sure. Those are things I think are important to call out as part of the document and make sure that, you know, we we've addressed them in a way that's accessible to the public. I think Commissioner Ruddock's comments about other buildings in this space is important. We do have the fire tower there. I counted 13 buildings between the south end of Main Street and Kelly that obstruct the ridgeline from the crown of the street. So we need some consistency with how we're thinking about the ridgeline and the impacts of projects. And some of those projects have been approved in the last two years. So they didn't fall under the LUP, but certainly this planning commission has reviewed, or the city staff has has reviewed some of those projects that impact the view of the ridgeline. So it's not an absolute standard. But it's an important part of what we need to look at from the LUP's perspective. I do think it's also important to draw the scale because I've heard feedback from individuals who have approached me about this project, who've raised a concern about the mass and the scale of the project. And they bring up the point that from an EIR perspective, it doesn't fit, it has a big impact. I think that's more of a design issue. And I think that, you know, that's out of scope for what we're talking about here, but it's something that, you know, future design we need to take into account. I also think it's important that, you know, the public concerns about sewage, water usage, traffic, you know. If it's not clear, let's let's make sure that these things are drawn out in the executive summary, that you've done the analysis, it's been thorough, and this is why this isn't an impact. And let's talk about the specific things because I just want to make sure that the public has a chance to look at the environmental impact because these issues have been raised in every single one of the public meetings I've attended. And so I just want to make sure that when we get to the final, whatever the conclusion is, the executive come, the the executive summary and the tables that the public are going to look at clearly call these things out. Because it is, these documents are impenetrable to me, who has been asked to do this. And I think they're even more impenetrable to the public. So whatever we can do to just make it easy for the folks who are participating in the process to see this and understand it and digest the work that's been done, that would be helpful because I do think many of the concerns that have been raised, and I think city staff are going to jump into this. So I won't, I won't address them myself. I think that a lot of those concerns have been addressed in the document. It's just a little difficult for the layperson to to find those things. So those are, let me just double check my notes. Actually, I'll pause for a second to see if anybody else has feedback.
Well, I know that Commissioners Riddick and Benjamin also have other things that they want to talk about. Jill, did you want to address the the concerns first or before we launch into the rest? Because there were several things brought up that you might want to answer.
Yeah, I I think it would be good for us to just do one pass through on responding to a few of the things that have come up where clarifying questions or just just straight up responses are appropriate. Anything that's deeper where we're going to need to talk to, like our traffic consultant, for example, we'll we'll give you some overview on that, but we're not going to dig in there. Circle Point, are you ready to start this?
Sure.
Great. Okay, Audrey, thank you.
All right. Good evening. I haven't had a chance to speak tonight, but thank you for being here and thanks for all the great comments and the compliments on the work. So I think what I'm going to do is try and group these by topic.
Just say who you are.
Oh, Audrey Zagazetta.
There you go.
With Circle Point.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to group this by comments. And as Jill indicated, the responses I'm going to provide tonight are really going to be more to continue to help people navigate through the document rather than providing answers on the adequacy of the the work and the technical work. It would be wise at this point to collect all of the comments first and look at it from a holistic viewpoint so that we can provide solid responses in the final EIR. So I'm going to go ahead and start with get my notes together here. So for, I'll go ahead and start with the parking impacts. So the parking impacts are not discussed in the body of the EIR. Several years ago, Sequa changed the threshold questions to not include parking as part of Sequa analysis. However, it is a very important topic. And we did include parking assessment, and that is, can be found in Appendix H of the EIR. So for those folks who want to take a deeper dive into the parking assessment that was conducted, that is attached as Appendix H to the EIR. Let's see, for somebody raised evacuation routes and also wildfire issues. We're not going to provide a response to the specific question. However, I will state that in Section 4.14 Public Services and Recreation, there is a discussion of evacuation routes and emergency response and analysis there, as well as in Section 4.17.4 wildfire. There is an analysis of wildfire concerns in the area. There is some questions raised on utilities. So Section 4.16 of the EIR addresses impacts, potential impacts the project could have to water consumption, wastewater usage, or wastewater generation, I should say, and other infrastructure utilities in the city and within the area. And then in terms of flooding, I heard that that was a concern that was raised, that would be addressed in Section 4.10 Hydrology of the EIR. In regards to the executive summary table, a comment was raised about some requested clarity between the significant and unavoidable impacts listed in that table compared to what is discussed in the Alternatives chapter. So on page 210 of the EIR, there is Table 2-1, and this lists all of the significant impacts that were identified in the document. And just to clarify, there are two, there are columns in there. So you want to make sure you look at the column all the way to the right because that column to the right is the the level of significance after mitigations applied. So the first, there's a significant unavoidable impacts identified under aesthetics, which is on page 210, but the table continues on. And you'll see that on the column far to the right was the the level of significance after mitigation, which is less insignificant for the remainder of the topics. I just want to clarify on visual simulations that the proposed project visual simulations did include some texture in the visual simulation part. So you'll see some windows and doors and different dimensions versus the visual simulations that were prepared. and different dimensions versus the visual simulations that were prepared for alternative two that are more just the massing and blocks. So you'll see a wall that doesn't have any windows. That was the way they were scoped to be prepared. And the reason is alternatives in an E I R are usually evaluated at a lesser level of detail than for the proposed project. So those are just used in terms of the massing for a point of reference, just to help the reader get a sense of what alternative two would look like. Let's see. So in regards to wetlands, that is something that was a good point. And we don't have a response for that tonight. But that is something that we would respond to in the final E I R. Jill covered some of the public participation components. And yeah, just to reiterate, the you will not start on responding to comments until the public circulation period is completed as a whole. And on page one dash five of the E I R, it does state different ways to communicate your comments to the city. And let's see.
The other thing raised was water use was raised.
So water use is in the public services section. And that is I just had it. That's where you go.
I think it's in four sixteen and I I will note for the record that that section was reviewed and commented on by the Coastside County Water District.
Great, thank you.
We've got a few more. Are you done, Audrey? I think that looks like your list.
Yeah, I was looking through the commissioner's comments, but if you have.
I'm going to go ahead and click through a few more. We received a comment through email that the Spanish translation was hard to hear. We're checking on it. Bridget's communicating with our translator and we want to make sure that that is done very well. I haven't received a comment like that before about this translation. This is the same system that our city council uses. And so we really appreciate anyone who who noticed that so that we can make sure it's working really right on. I heard a different question, I think about the wetlands follow-up work maybe then. Perhaps the way you heard it, Audrey, and I just, I do want to note for the record that so H D Harvey went back out to the site in twenty twenty one and they confirmed their twenty seventeen field work. And then they did additional work because the scope of the project site for alternatives two and three expanded and included more more area. And so I, we we can have them go into this more in the future and we can include it in a response, but we want you to know that the work is current and it was consistent. Regarding heights, there was that nice question from one of our speakers of how how high are these two buildings if we're alternative two? Building height is measured from existing grade. If we measure from existing grade to the ridge line, the south building, which is the two-story building, is thirty four feet. It was like thirty four point oh five feet. And the north building, which is three stories, measured from existing grade to the ridge line is thirty six feet. There is the question of why is the three-story building only a little bit taller than the two-story building? And we will note that the two-story building has a higher floor to ceiling height on the first floor because it includes all kinds of common spaces like the lobby and some conference rooms and other kinds of spaces that are not guest rooms, and they have higher ceilings for a floor like that. Heights of other structures in the area, we'll get back to you on that. I don't have a lot of them off the top of my head, other than the senior coast siders, I believe it's on the order of forty three feet. Accommodations were asked about. We want to note that the pre-COVID hotel occupancy rate is is documented in a lot of different work that you've seen through our short-term rental ordinance work and even some background work on the land use plan, and it was about sixty eight percent. That is an average over the course of the week and weekends are heavily occupied and the weekdays are are less so. There was also a public comment about low-cost accommodations or lower-cost accommodations. There is policy in the land use plan about the provision of such accommodations. And Commissioner Hernandez also brought this up relative to coastal act policy. City staff is working with the applicant on this as well as with coastal commission staff, and you will see that this is addressed in the E I R. We we talk about this. So there's there's a note about that. I'm almost done. There was a very important question about the scope of the analysis for the alternatives and whether or not that included all of the reasonably foreseeable development of the alternatives. Reasonably foreseeable development for alternatives two and three was fully covered. So any units that could possibly be developed on that site on the north side of Seymour, where Seymour Street were considered in all of the studies. Alternative two was specifically studied to the same level as the project. And so the traffic study accounted for all of the uses at maximum development potential for alternative two. Greenhouse gassing emissions, energy use, et cetera, et cetera. So we just want to confirm for you that that was accounted for. It is not something where any can was kicked. It is acknowledged. Which relates to the question about zoning. We will get back to you on some more details with that, but let's remember that our land use plan put this site, the dealership right now is in the commercial general zoning district. The portion of the project area covered in alternatives two and three, that is on the north side of Seymour, is in the R two zoning district. And the bulk of the site, the five acre site that was formerly in the L C Smith Estate Plan Development is now in the commercial general land use designation. And the land use plan includes policy that indicates that the the land use plan has hierarchy over over zoning while we're working on our implementation zoning. The land use plan also has an appendix that indicates the zone, the intended zoning district for for that site. So we are working with that in that manner and we can talk about that more later. The question about the subdivision is really important. We didn't, and no one anticipated that another wetland was going to be found per se. There's a ditch there. It was a man-made ditch to convey water and the consultant, our H D Harvey, determined it had hydric soils. So that was learned after the applicant had already submitted a concept for a subdivision. So that's why you see a mitigation measure about for alternative two and alternative three relative to that subdivision. Staff is working with the applicant on other options because the subdivision as proposed would conflict with with that policy that Commissioner Gossett cited, and we're we're well aware of that. So we will have an update for you about that later. And those are my notes. Anything else, Audrey?
Yeah, one more for Commissioner Gossett. Regarding schools, parks, and other public facilities, the question marks are part of the sequel question. That's how they have it framed in the sequel guidelines. But if you look right beneath it on page four point fourteen dash eighteen is the answer. We provide the analysis right below that.
Well, that's really helpful. All of that was very helpful. Thank you. Commissioner Benjamin, we're back to you.
Well, we've been very patient, but you haven't had a chance to take your own swing, Chair Gordon, but you want to? Okay, I'll carry on then.
All yours.
So I'm assuming that there were a couple. I didn't expect my concerns to be addressed. If there were any, I missed them. Except for the the what, the much appreciated point about reasonably foreseeable development in alternative two. Thank you for clarifying that. As I said, I haven't I haven't been able to plow through the entire document, so forgive my ignorance about that. But in addition to the points that I raised earlier, these other points may or may fall into the category like the reasonably foreseeable that's been addressed, or maybe something like the, we need to look at the impact of inconsistency with local coastal program or other approved general plan that we haven't responded to at this point, and I wouldn't have expected them to be responded to.
We'd like your comment. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. The that area saw a project to change the lighting at the hotel on the opposite side of Highway one. And that lighting proposal, that lighting program got got modified significantly to protect the dark skies. And I'm trusting that our analysis has appropriate mitigations or controls in place to ensure that we're not compromising the quality of the skies in that area. The I appreciated the point about knowing the elevations of the buildings. Since the buildings are set back in, you know, different distances from the the sensitive resource, the sensitive visual resource points of view, it seems like the best description is to see those buildings in context with the hillsides behind them and see the proposed models with the hillsides behind them at the various viewpoints. And I'm confident that when I dig into the document, that's what I'm going to find. I understood that the quick analysis of alternate two with the sixteen-foot breezeway versus the thirty-two-foot breezeway didn't capture that level of detail. I understand it wasn't scoped there. At some point, it will be helpful to have that understanding if that alternative goes into a more detailed analysis. Since alternative two required a lot line adjustment and lot line adjustments are subject to there are some constraints with respect to wetlands on them, and I don't remember what they are. I hadn't really thought about it until it just came up. And I'm confident that that's something that Jill and staff will chase down and they'll make sure that there's not some unfortunate unintended side effect with respect to the way the lot line adjustment would affect the ability to use the areas outside of the buffer and certainly inside the buffer of the wetlands. So for example, if it created a lot, but there was no reasonably there there was not a feasible design, except if it goes inside the wetland and uses a lower buffer, that would be problematic for a lot line adjustment if that wasn't the case before the L A. But I'm sure you guys are all over that. So as you can see, it's a half-developed thought because my brain is only working half-speed right now. I think that the comments with respect to traffic with respect to CEQA have that vehicle miles travel CEQA model. It could be that the the models of how much time it takes for people to get in and out is pertinent to the coastal act, the consistency with coastal access. And I noticed that there was a reference to the counterintuitive point that building the hotel could actually improve service levels at certain intersections at certain times of the day. So, you know, I'm a Stanford engineer, they gave me extra letters after my name. One of those areas was queuing theory. And I'm here to tell you, you could have that happen. It's counterintuitive until you, if you change the scope of the area where you're analyzing the queuing network, the improvements in traffic at one point in the network can result from an increased bottleneck in another location in the network. So if for, and I'm not predicting that this is the case, but if main and highway one south at this intersection were to see increased traffic queue backups, then I would expect highway one and ninety-two to have reduced queue as a result of that. It's it's a tandem network problem as part of a larger queue network problem. So good results are hard to see. This is not, it's like trying to use visual flight rules in a hurricane. You know, you're in clouds, use the models and be sure that the analysis is scoped so that we understand the impact across the whole area, not just at particular intersections like like ninety-two and one, as important as that is. Let's see. There was a process point that surprised me. And again, I'm not saying it's wrong. I just want to understand it better. In all the years that I have been looking at secret documents, and that would be getting on sixteen, when a project came up with significant unavoidable, unmitigatable adverse impacts, it did, you know, moving forward, the project would require a measure of overriding concern. But I was of the impression that that would not be considered by the planning commission. That would be a decision by the city council. So I would appreciate, again, this is not a challenge. This is me just getting a better understanding in the corner case, what the planning commission's role might be in the event that the project called for a measure of overriding concern. And I'm hoping that we are scheduling this so that any consideration of the adequacy of this document coincides with consideration of the project itself. I am not at all interested in having an adequate E I R without a project. To me, that's a loose cannon floating around waiting for a different project. And it's no disparagement of this application. I just think it's bad hygiene for planning to to have the E I R done and not have a project that goes with it. So I would certainly want to keep that agenda out, and I'm guessing that you would too. I think that covers what I what I can say after the limited reading I've done. So thank you again for the second swing at this and for the answers that have come along. And I'm I'm looking forward to hearing my colleagues' comments. And I appreciate staffs and the consultants' willingness to consider the concerns that the public has raised and that I have heard. Thank you.
That's smart. Vice Chair Hernandez.
So he's dangerous to speak after a rocket scientist.
I know, I know.
He he's an applied mathematician. He's not actually a rocket scientist, so. And I learned.
With the chair, I I was published in the Journal of Spacecraft and Rocket.
Got it.
Tandem tandem queuing, I've learned more about tandem queuing tonight than I have in many, many years. So I agree with Jimmy's comment, Commissioner Benjamin's comment about I'd like to see the E I R with the project at the same time. I think that makes a lot of sense. Just want to go back to the folks following at home who may get lost a little bit in the esoterica. If I look at page two ten, table two one, we have significant and of what this document is draft document says, we have significant and unavoidable significance for scenic vista impact, scenic resource impact, and degradation of the visual character, significant and unavoidable. And just so I'm clear, because I'm not as smart as Jimmy, that includes Um, that includes alternative two. Is that a fair way to summarize that? Is that with alternative two or the original project, both of those have significant. And unavoidable impacts after mitigation.
Well, we don't know.
Right? That was my, that was my question. That's what I was trying to get at because I missed that.
Yeah.
So I'm happy to, um, provide a response to that now. If I, just for clarification, um, so the way the E I R is structured is. Um, if you look at the T O C, anything outside of the alternatives chapter. Is focused on the proposed project. So all of the analysis on the alternatives, um, and conclusions. Live in that chapter five, which is the alternatives chapter. There is a brief summary of alternatives that were evaluated in the executive summary. Um, but the conclusions of that analysis is not provided. In the table. So that's strictly for the proposed project.
Okay, to just, just so when we, we put this out to the public, it, it, it makes the document a lot more accessible. If things like that are put further in the front. That was my point. That's all. This is a very thorough document. Uh, you guys have covered great deal of ground here and I thank you for your hard work. This is definitely my bedtime reading.
Well, you'll fall asleep quickly.
I have many times already.
Commissioner Reddick, I see you yawning. That's, that's the equivalent of raising a hand.
No, I was laughing at Commissioner Hernandez's bedtime reading.
All right.
I, I'm, I'm going to confine myself strictly to the draft E I R question, so I, I'm done with that. I have no more tonight. Thank you.
Um, does anybody else have anything? Okay. Um, so Jill, do you have everything you need?
We do. Thank you very much. And we want to thank the public. We, uh, took many, many notes and we have a lot to work with. And we know more is coming in. Uh, we will keep the commission, um, apprised of, of comments, um, over time. They've been coming in batches. We know that you have a lot of reading to do when, when these come through. So we like to, um, give you everything we can in advance and we'll, we'll do that. We just wanted to.
Joe, sorry, sorry to interrupt you. Um, but that, um, there was one thing that was raised about Lake County and the wildfire evacuation. Um, that was, uh, the Gwinick project. It's, uh, so it doesn't really relate. I, I, and I wouldn't say like, I'm not a lawyer, but, um. You know, Lake County wildfires are a little different than here, but you still should look at it. Um, and that's the Gwinick, like the wine, Gwinick Valley.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Was something else? Hold on one second. Sorry. Now I don't know. There's so many notes. All right, um, that'll do. Um, do we have time for a director's report?
A very brief one. Um, I always promise that this, tonight it will be. Um, your next meeting is in two weeks and you will see the Caltrans V M S. That's the variable message sign that was continued to a date certain. Uh, we will also have the, um, proposed mural for the Kelly Avenue facade of the Cunha Market. It was supposed to be ready tonight and it didn't quite make it, so you will see it in two weeks. Um, let's see. Oh, and we have a few community, uh, development director hearing items coming up. Bridget's, um, preparing those, uh, those agendas get posted. I think most of them are A D U's again and they're going to be administrative. We, we must review them in that format. Um, and training. I afforded a training opportunity to you. I'm really sorry that I came in so late. That Sonoma State Planning Commissioners Training is excellent. And, um, they haven't held it for a couple of years because of COVID. We completely appreciate that folks might not be comfortable yet to meet in person. They are not offering it online. Um, I'm going to go. It's Saturday and I've been asking them every six months when they're going to do their training. And I know I'm on their mailing list like four times. So I, I don't know why, we just got noticed, um, yesterday for a Saturday, um, session. So I'm sorry that it was so last minute. Next year, um, hopefully, uh, we can, we can get you to have, have that experience. Um, former Commissioner Polger and I went, um, right before the COVID lockdown in early twenty twenty. And, um, it was, it was absolutely fabulous. We've both learned a lot. So we'll keep you apprised of other training. I understand Commissioner Gossip's working with Bridget on, uh, something coming up in October. And, uh, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, we're down to commissioners. Do you have any, um, anything to announce? Or talk about? We have a lot of no's. Okay, I think we're done. Anyone who want to agree with me?
I'd make a motion to end tonight's meeting.
We have a second from Gossip and from Benjamin and maybe from Reddick too. Um, second from Gossip, Commissioner Gossip.
Oh, yeah, I have just, I, I did want to say one quick thing. I wanted to report. Uh, when I was walking my dog out on the bluff, uh, the other day, I saw two dead, uh, ravens. And when I called the, um, county to, you know, report, uh, there's a county hotline for, um. Gosh, I'm going blank right now. It's, it's very late, but, um, there's West Nile going around and they have a West Nile hotline. And they asked me to go back and collect it and by the time I got there, it was already moved. Cause I guess the ravens move each other around. But then I continued walking and I found another raven because I had taken a picture of the first and it wasn't the same. But so I did collect that and the county, uh, had put it on ice and the county picked it up. So I'll find out in a couple of weeks if it, uh, has West Nile, but, um, it is going around. So, um, that's something the county is asking us to do is to help them collect the birds. Because they can't come out right away because usually the bird is moved by another animal by the time they get out there. So if we see it, call them and they'll come and pick it up. So anyway, that's all I wanted to report.
Citizen science at its best.
No, that's, that's, that's where you first see West Nile. It's great. Um, so we have a motion. We have a second. We need a roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Reddick.
Yes.
Commissioner Gossip.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Aye.
And Chair Gordon.
Yes, please.
Your meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Take care, everybody.
Take care yourself too.